...in Land Use Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Charlotte County, Florida for Tuesday, July 26, 2022. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present, and if you would please like to join us with an invocation and a pledge from Pastor John Boucher of the Calvary Baptist Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Father, for this special day. Thank you for this meeting of these people that are gathered together. I thank you for the commissioners. I thank you for the county administrator, the attorney, the clerk of the circuit court, and thank you for them, and I'm asking today for your richest blessings upon them as they make very important decisions, and may you guide them, may you guide what they say, their thinking process. And I understand very clearly that you say very clearly in your scripture that if any of us lack wisdom, that we're to ask of you, and I'm asking today that you just give wisdom. Thank you again that we have the opportunity to meet together and to plan for the things of our county. This county is growing. There's wonderful things happening here, and so, Lord, may your hand of blessing be upon each activity that goes through today, and we pray this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and with this, we will now go to Mr. Flores for changes to the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one, we have a couple items, so I'll get right to it. Commissioners, we have on the first change memo, addition number one to R4, we added the item for the Veterans Boulevard Corridor Planning Study Update. Addition number two to R5, added the Department of Health update regarding Port Charlotte Beach. Addition number three, R6, added a resolution related to enforcing stop-work orders. Change number one to R3, we added the draft letter of support. Change number two to UB4, changed from quasi-judicial to legislative. Change number three, excuse me, to D1, we revised the letter of support for the Helper Act of 2021. Change number four to T1, added the, or added a revised presentation for the Bayshore Park Update. And change number five to B1, added four items related to some past board meeting minutes. Change number six to R1, added the attachment for the August 3 Water Authority meeting agenda. Change number seven to R2, and we added the WCIND August 18 Agenda. Change number eight to D2, updated the wording and attached the ARPA Funding Plan. And then this morning, we had two items, change number nine to Reports Filed and Received, and updated COVID report from Department of Health, and then change number 10 to R5, again, updated or added a Department of Health presentation to R5.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion on proclamation.
Don't move.
On any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Commissioner Doig. Good morning.
Good morning. We have two proclamations this morning. The first is the Florida Water Professionals Month. The Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association is a statewide organization composed of water industry professionals who dedicate themselves to the production and distribution of safe drinking water, as well as the proper collection, treatment, reuse, and disposal of wastewater and stormwater. The organization is committed to protecting the health of Florida citizens and our state's natural resources, and supports the training, certification, and licensing of water industry personnel as a means to achieve these goals. This organization, in recognizing the importance of the Florida statutes and the administrative code that regulate the water industry, acts as a liaison between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and industry personnel. Each year, the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association recognizes all those who have played a significant part in operating and maintaining drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater systems in Florida by celebrating Florida Water Professionals Month, which applauds their constant efforts to protect our health and environment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the month of August 2022 shall be designated and observed in Charlotte County as Water Professionals Month, and all citizens are encouraged to join us in thanking all water and wastewater professional staff for their hard work and dedication to preserving Florida's water resources. Commissioners, we have four individuals that are going to accept this proclamation this morning, Tom Hill, Johnny Chamberlain, Charlie Rhine, and Jeremy Frost. Gentlemen?
Who wants to hold?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The next proclamation we have this morning is Purple Heart Day. Our military's oldest medal, the Purple Heart, is awarded to US service members who have been wounded or killed in war. The original honor was called the Badge of Military Merit, established in 1782 by General George Washington. Purple Heart Day is observed throughout the United States on August 7, and we honor and revere our Purple Heart recipients by attending local veterans events, visiting local veteran cemeteries and/or memorials, flying the American flag, visiting the National Purple Heart Hall of Honor, or making a donation to the Military Order of the Purple Heart Foundation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the 7th day of August 2022 shall be known in all of Charlotte County as Purple Heart Day, and accepting that is Commissioner Stephen R. Deutsch.
Just one brief comment. Of course, I'll make a comment. I saw Gary out there, I thought he may be coming up to get that. Just real quick, there's two exciting events the first week in, the first week in August that relate to the military. The first was the founding of the United States Coast Guard in 1790, and I remember it well, and the other is Purple Heart Day, and we will be having a program that morning at 11:00 a.m. at the Gaines Park. It's going to be short, but somewhat inspirational, and we have so many members of the Purple Heart in Charlotte County, and we're so proud of every single one of them. Thank you.
Let's get a photo of everybody.
Yeah. Why don't you do that?
Want me to do this now while I'm down here?
Do the employee thing.
Let's do, yeah, let's just. We'll turn over our next item to Mr. Flores.
Commissioners, we've got Employee of the Month recognition for June of 2022, so I believe we're going to have Mr. Travis Perdue do the honors. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Travis Perdue, Facilities Director for the Record.
Good morning.
It's my honor to bring to you the Employee of the Month from our department, Anthony Leggett. Anthony has demonstrated his countless way, in countless ways, his dedication and commitment to serving the county. He's been exceptional team, exceptional team player and team member. He's loyal, professional, hardworking, and he's earned the respect and admiration of his coworkers and everyone that he encounters. So a couple of comments from others that have, they provided that align with the mission vision and values. Anthony is my go-to person. He is very supportive and is always quick to assist with any questions or concerns. He is very responsive and a great communicator, and follows up with projects on a consistent basis. Anthony is very committed and is one of those people in the county that we are all comfortable reaching out to because we know that he will get the job done. So, thank you, and bring Anthony up.
On behalf of the Board and the citizens that you serve, thank you very much for your dedication. Now we'll go to the check presentation for the Veterans Memorial William R. Gaines Jr. Memorial Park. Commissioner Deutsch.
Thank you, Will. This morning, we're honored to have one of our local Charlotte County businesses presenting a check to us. LSI Corporations was founded, Randy, over 20 years ago, and they were a leader in land development, and they make an impact in southwest Florida, and they're also very involved in the community, and they're very proud of their involvement in the community and what they do in supporting local charities, and you're going to have to help me hold this. And LSI has given $5,000 to William R. Gaines Park, and again, they're very involved in the community. We thank you for your contribution, and if you haven't been out to the park, come and visit. If you don't have a date to come and visit, come out on the Purple Heart Day. Thank you.
We just appreciate the opportunity and all the good work that you guys are doing up here in Charlotte. I want to thank you, Commissioner, for putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, and thank your team for your dedication.
Again, on behalf of the Board, we are appreciative. This is a public-private partnership to make this happen, and with corporations, companies, and so on that are donating individuals like these folks. It makes it possible that we reach our goal to build this wonderful, very beautiful memorial to the Beirut bombing victims. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, with that, I'm just going to point out, we still have vacancies for things if people want to get engaged, so please look that up online. There's many, many boards and committees that can be served on if you would so choose. Next thing we want to do is go to consent agenda. We, oh yeah, public input. Sorry, that's what I meant. I'm just moved.
We know that's what you meant.
Yeah, yeah, getting ready, because you can speak on any item that's county-related, so I'm just scrolling. That's my problem, sorry about that, folks. So we're going to go to public input. Anyone wishing to address the Board during this portion of the meeting may come forward, state your name for the record. You're supposed to fill out a card, and I do have some cards. You'll have up to three minutes. It's to address agenda items only, and you address the body in whole, not in individual, by individual. I have, John, you're first. Mr. John Everson speaking to T1.
John Everson, live on Melbourne Street, want to address the situation on parking around Bayshore. Since the last meeting in June, I'm not aware of any progress with Restaurant Specialties. There is a great deal of talk about the new community development plan for the future of Charlotte County. Many volunteers have been working on this for many hours and unfortunately believe much of it will be wasted. Over the years, we have learned such long-range plans have met with just too many, two, three votes by the Board of Commissioners versus a group of deep-pocket financial advisors, investors, that have been allowed to alter those plans. Just how much of it, how much has it cost the county to date to satisfy the needs of Sunseeker, and how much more are you willing to spend on new requests in the future? You have already committed funds to widening Palmerly Street, putting in sidewalks and paving a new parking lot, all before you handle sidewalks and traffic flow and flooding in the Melbourne area. Mr. Truax, in the meantime, has suggested we buy more land in Placida area to create another park and kayak-launching facilities for $10 million. At the MPO meeting in May, you spent four hours discussing future plans for the intersection of Melbourne and Route 41, only to hear DOT is not going to make additional changes that were already made. DOT appears to be closing the current, does not be, appear to be closing the current entrance on Live Oak Park from the bridge, now removing two additional ramps, which Mr. Doig knew were in the signed deal with Restaurant Specialties prior to discussions with the public. That meeting was canceled when the agreement was signed prior to the public release. Let's hold up on a further parking lot expansion at Bayshore. Let's close the deal with Restaurant Specialties. This will eliminate many problems in the future and allow you to perhaps sell the property for a future parking lot for the new convention and casino at Sunseeker. It will provide a wonderful new kayak park at the far lower cost than buying and developing the Placida area for $10 million and reducing the traffic nightmares that you were presented for the Melbourne area. Let's close out the deal with Restaurant Specialties so we can plan for the future and not approve the suggestions for the additional parking and changes as presented today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next I have Lynn Sable.
What's that?
I just called the next person.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, John.
Good morning. I have a handout for you. Good morning, county commissioners. Please read this article. You're going to hear from the Board, the Department of Health later on your agenda. That's the article that references the 13-year-old who swam in Alligator Bay. That's the bay I've been talking about. It's right off of Charlotte Harbor Beach Club. This young boy is fighting for his life from this rare amoeba. That's the area I've been talking about with loads of green algae. The amoeba proliferates in warm water where there is pollution and where there are fresh water sources, so we have those conditions. We need to clean up the pollution in our harbor. Now you have an opportunity. That is F6, which is your Engineering Services Resiliency and Modernization Program, which emphasizes the One Water Framework. As you support that and your water quality manager, please ensure that this engineering services firm understands the pollution going into our water and provides advice to you to reduce and mitigate it. To support this cleaner water, could you consider an ordinance supporting public sewers for all development in this county? Please support the actions that Commissioner Deutsch has been pushing. What could you, what actions could you take to limit or curtail fertilizer use? Please support the efforts that some of you commissioners are taking. What actions can you take to restrict the thousands of gallons of toxins being dumped in by the phosphate-mining operations Mosaic going directly into the Peace River? Please support the efforts that some of the commissioners want to take. Some of you have spoken in favor of all these. Soon there will be program managers in the Resiliency and Modernization Program to support you. Have them inform you of options to curtail fertilizers, connect all homes to public sewers, stop the phosphate-mining company Mosaic from dumping thousands of gallons of effluents into the Peace River. Last point, tomorrow is DeSoto County's workshop about phosphate mining. Please talk to your fellow commissioners in DeSoto to advise them against allowing phosphate mining in their county. We don't need more effluents being in our waterway. Thank you so much.
Next I have Mr. Richard Russell, also speaking to T1.
I'm Richard Russell, Port Charlotte, Florida, and I'm speaking on behalf of T1. In the hospitality, restaurant, and retail business, proprietary parking is preferred parking, which is nearest and most convenient to one's business. It's better to have 100 spaces in close proximity to your entrance than to have 200 further away and inconvenient to your customers. But when the closest are taken, any parking spot will do. Thus, our county park area becomes the answer for Sunseeker. If you're keeping up with the monument being constructed on the north side of the harbor, Charlotte Harbor, take a gander at what our county will be providing Sunseeker for free. They claim it is additional parking for those citizens who want to enjoy Bayshore Live Oak Park. Probably some will, but if as it likely, Sunseeker charges for their on-site parking. Some, if not a lot, of people will find the additional parking provided on the attached plan to be provided, and who is picking up the cost of this freebie to Sunseeker? Did anyone vote on this? Couldn't that area have amenities for our community that's consistent with the park? It was originally purchased for use as a park. In the past commission meetings, commissioners have embraced the need for parking so people can access and enjoy the boardwalk surrounding Sunseeker. At nearly $20,000 per parking space cost for park, for a parking garage, and by the county providing access to approximately 150 surface parking spaces immediately adjacent to Sunseeker, Sunseeker is benefiting not having to build a parking garage, which would cost $3 million and $20,21. Sunseeker already has approval to squeeze more than, more on to their 21-plus acres because they are unique, per the parking study accepted by county staff years ago. I'm confident Sunseeker knew that parking study was a farce and now needs additional parking, so they're effectively seeking a $2 million gift savings from Charlotte County taxpayers. Once they expand to their full build-out of more than 1,500 units, I guarantee you, they will be back for more parking. I believe most people hope Sunseeker is a smashing success, but they should have required to, been required to develop the site and provide all of the necessary parking on their property. One thing that's going to happen, nothing lasts forever. Sunseeker may be built as a project intended for their use, flying people in, shuttling them to the resort. At some point in time, that may be changed. A major hotel corporation like Marriott or Hyatt or somebody like that may come in. Allegiant may be bought out by somebody, and then they end up no longer having that connection, and then everybody will be driving there, and they'll want to rent cars. The project, I believe, has approved of about 1,300 and some odd cars with 1,500 units build-out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next I have Mr. Gary Butler. He's speaking to C3 Tourism Development Council. Good morning, sir. Good to see you.
Good morning. Good to see you all again. Thank you, first off, to the Board of Commissioners for its ongoing support to Military Heritage Museum. It's been an honor to serve as their Executive Director and overseeing the relocation and expansion of the museum. In my role as Director, I've had an opportunity to work closely with a number of Charlotte County Departments, and certainly appreciative of the effort in working with them. Would like to specifically call out the, the Tourism Development Council, opportunity of two, I noticed there's an opening, and it would be an honor for me to, to be able to serve on that Development Council in support of tourism in the county area. The museum, along with so many other attractions, are certainly vital to the health of a community and our ability to bring in tourism from throughout the country, in our case, as so many, so many folks come to the museum. We have grown significantly since we moved, and I hope that I can add value as a volunteer serving on the Development Council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other cards? Thank you, Judith. Mr. Tim Ritchie, speaking to R1.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Administrator, and everybody in the chamber. I'd just like to say that I agree completely with what Lynn just spoke about, and Mr. Russell for that matter. You know, this morning, when I looked at the paper, county, no positive reports for rare-brain-eating amoeba. Then, I think I see that we're going to be talking about Peace River Water Supply Authority, but on Sunday, July 17, 2022, if you go to page 5A, you'll see this nice ad by Mosaic "We provide a safe haven for breeding birds." This is a map of Polk County. That's the 2016 sinkhole, 215 million gallons through the burn through the limestone. That's the 2015 $1.8 billion environmental fine at Mosaic Green Bay, and this here is the Mosaic Barto South Phosphogypsum Stack System. And if you see this little green line here, this is Outfall D002, and this little green line is Six Mile Creek, and that there's the Peace River. And every day, they are discharging up to 27 million gallons of toxic pollution into the Peace River. Now, I have been here for four years. It's now four years, Commissioner Constance, and I can assure every one of you, the things that I've brought forth to you, the validity, validity is overwhelming. And when we have 5,000 acres of seagrass die from 2018 to 2020, it's time to really pay attention. I'd like you to increase Brandon Moody's budget. I'd like you to find another $250,000 for him this week. He needs that money to start sediment-testing this river. This is from an article. "Mosaic spokesperson Jackie Barone said the decision was made because the DeSoto mine was previously meant to feed the company's production facility in Plant City, which was permanently closed in 2019 and not because of composition of the board." This is complete bull, and we need the Minnesota Peace River Water Supply Authority to really crack down on the river.
Mr. Ritchie, I'm going to ask you next time that you please tie it to the agenda item.
That is to the agenda item. This is.
Didn't hear anything about the Water Authority, and don't, don't respond. I'm just telling you next time, it needs to be right on point, or I will not let you speak.
This is on point.
Sir, you're done. Thank you.
I'm not done.
Yes, you are, you are now.
Remember, you work for us.
Kevin? Kevin? Thank you. All right. Any other cards? Anybody else wishing to speak? All right. Seeing none, we will move forward with the consent agenda, and I'm starting with Commissioner Deutsch today, sir. Commissioner Sale.
Nothing.
Commissioner Constance.
I'd like to pull D7 and D8.
D7 and D8, and Commissioner Doig.
Nothing, sir. Move the balance.
All right. We have a motion and a second to move the balance. I have discussion. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, on D2, the ARPA funding, I assume that that will include, it's across-the-board adjustments, that will include two employees, the county attorney and the MPO Executive Director as well.
Yes, sir. I think, I was going to bring that up, and I think we need a motion to make certain that it's clear that that's, so I'll take that as a form of motion.
Sir, if it's the amendment to, I guess, the motion to approve the consent.
Right.
Just to modify D2, just to make sure those two particular positions are included.
Yes, sir, and I'll second that, and Commissioner Constance is in the queue.
Sir, if it's the amendment to, I guess, the motion to approve the consent-
Right.
Just to modify D2, just to make sure those two particular positions are included.
Yes, sir, and I'll second that. And Commissioner Constance is in the queue.
Sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on C3. Chair in the TDC, I'm really excited about Mr. Butler coming on and bringing his wealth of knowledge and experience, and he's going to have a good time with us. So Gary, welcome, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right, very good. So I'm going to entertain a motion on the amendment first. Is there any opposition to the motion? Okay, there's no opposition to the amendment. Now we'll take the amended motion and ask, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, and we will move forward to Commissioner Constance. D7, sir.
D7, thank you. I just had a question for Real Estate Services on this one. So when I look up the item, and I did get briefing notes, but if I'm the public-
Just to clarify, this is F7.
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 I'm sorry.
I didn't think we have a D7, but I-
You're right, I'm sorry.
F7 and F8.
Thank you for adjusting. Yes, F7 and 8, thank you.
Okay.
So, F7, you know, I appreciate the item, but I didn't see what you were talking about based on the online documents. I see all of the bids that we've accepted, but there's nothing denoting the 10 properties we're rescinding the bids on. So can you show me that?
The 10 properties. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner, Sherry Alexander, acting purchasing manager.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the tabulation, do you see the properties there, the bids received?
I see all the bids received. I see three, four, five, six, seven. You know, there's probably 25 bids that are highlighted in yellow. Yes.
Okay.
But this item says rescind award of sale, and it says requesting to rescind award properties to three bidders who have decided not to move forward. Who are those three bidders?
And I will turn that over.
And again, I got a briefing note with, I think, 10 parcels on it, but like I said, the item that's online is extremely confusing, and while it states it in the item on the main agenda, when I go, all I'm getting is this backup. So can you explain that?
Yes, sir. Stephen Keppe, Real Estate Services. The item you're looking for, I understand, was provided on a briefing note, but it is not attached to the agenda, and that's an oversight on my part. That being the case, it is ambiguous on what the 10 parcels are to the general public, and I understand where you're coming from. If you would like us to put it forward at another meeting and postpone it so we can identify these exact 10 parcels, that's something we can do.
Yeah, is it time-sensitive?
No, sir. What will happen, we'll take these once it's rescinded and put them back on the fall sale. If we don't have it in time for the fall sale with no meetings in August, then we'll put in the spring sale of '23.
Okay. You know, I just, I think for transparency, it just, I don't like going to the item and trying to have to do detective work. It should be very clear. A, then B, then C.
Yes, sir.
One, two, three, and it follows through, and here's all the backup material. And I, you know, in my humble opinion, I don't know that this has been vetted appropriately. I don't know that anybody from the public is really mining down on this, but I think we need to have consistency in how we provide information to the public. So, Mr. Chair, I move to postpone this item to September.
Second. Motion second. And just to comment, if I can, I don't disagree with you. You know, we had last workshop, I think, we had where something wasn't attached. So I want to just make sure we're getting these things attached for clarity and transparency to the public. And so I agree with you, and we'll be voting in favor of it. Commissioner Salew?
Yeah, I appreciate the catch on the attachment. I was basing my review on the briefing note.
Yes, sir.
It was crystal clear when I read the briefing note, but when you go back to look at the attachments, it's not clear. So while we may understand it, the public doesn't. So I do agree. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Care.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your help. F8?
F8. I just was curious. I'm going to move in approval of F8, but I wanted to find out from Community Services, these are shade structures at Maguire and Chuck Dever Park. I really would like, Mr. Scott, how are you? I really would like to see pictures, you know? I mean, we get descriptions, but we don't really get to see what these things that we're spending all this money on actually look like. You know, if I were an engineer like the gentleman to my right, I would understand, you know, the poles being certain sizes, and I could maybe imagine what I was looking at. But I think it's important because shade structures are critically important for the park. So I applaud you for getting these improvements put in. But I just think it's helpful for myself, for the fellow Commissioners, and for the public to kind of see, you know, we showed them what the splash pads are going to look like, these types of amenities that they're going to be using. It'd be really nice to see what they look like.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Tommy Scott, Community Services. If that's your desire, we can work to move forward, include pictures when we're bringing forward these types of items.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, thank you. I move approval.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Is there any opposition to the motion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Okay, that dispenses with our consent agenda. And with that, I'm going to take some things out of order if it's okay with the board, and I'm going to ask that Dr. Pepe come forward and go ahead and handle R5.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So while I'm loading the presentation, I'll give a quick COVID update as far as- Could you please state your name for the record? Yeah, I'm sorry. Joe Pepe, Florida Department of Health, Charlotte County. Thank you, sir. Before I dive into this presentation, I just want to give a quick update. We're seeing still elevated activity of COVID. Positivity rates are anywhere between 20%, 23%. We're starting to see a seven-day average decline to roughly about 70, 71 cases a day on average. So statistically, it looks like we might be past sort of the 4th of July surge that we saw. So we'll continue to watch that and work closely with you all. There's no unmet needs right now in the community as far as services and resources, so I just wanted to give you a quick update since I hadn't been here in person in a little bit of time. So today, yes, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the positivity rate, though, is just based upon the fact that who's actually getting tested, and even if people are doing home testing, are they even reporting it? So the numbers are a lot higher.
Absolutely. Yep. So what we're seeing right now, and when we distributed take-home tests and self-tests, we saw that it was an extremely low self-reporting rate. So if you were to consider that, you can expect that the positivity is much higher.
So I think the real question is, you know, how many really sick people are there? What are the hospital numbers? Because I know they went up, and now I think they've stabilized again. Where are we at?
The hospitals are much lower now. ICUs are not overloaded. We're seeing single-digit type hospitalization rates now. Nursing homes are busy. They do have COVID wings that they stood up, but they're not offloading like before. Those patients are doing well and recovering. And then we're also proactively going into those nursing homes, doing therapeutics and vaccination efforts and infection control to try and help protect that most vulnerable population.
Because anecdotally, I know there's a lot of people that I'm hearing are getting it, and they're just, you know, quarantined for a few days. They're having very mild symptoms, and then they're back on the job. So-
Yep. Folks with prior immunity, whether they've had COVID before and/or vaccination, vaccination is definitely helping in attenuating the severity of disease. And so what we're seeing is what you just described. We're seeing people get sick, they get better quickly, and then they go back on with their lives.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Salew.
Ms. Chair, another item, health-related, monkey pox. Obviously, that's been in the news. There's a couple hundred cases in Florida. How are we prepared for that? I understand it's very treatable, but it's not as highly contagious.
Correct. Yep. So monkey pox has been circulating, and, you know, primarily it's in major metropolitan areas. We've been playing our role. We have our vaccines in stock. We have also the therapeutics in stock as well. Early detection and treatment is really what's key there. And right now, it's circulating in specific populations, but there is some percentage of transmission to any other contacts in a home. We've seen where those individuals might be caregivers and things like that. So we're continuing to watch that, especially monitoring travelers and things like that. So, yep, it's still on our radar. So is hepatitis A, and so is other meningitis as well.
I'm sorry, I may have missed this. In the COVID boosters, how's the frequency of that or the-
It's low. It really depends on what the surges look like. What we expect is that there'll probably be a stronger initiative for vaccination during the fall. Some of the manufacturers are talking about a new formulation so that it could provide better coverage for the new variants that are out. So we're just waiting to see what the latest advisory comes out and what the manufacturers get approved. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Deutsch.
Thank you. A generation ago, it was chickenpox, measles, mumps, and polio on the other end. And it seems like we're going through a generational cycle of dealing with medical challenges. I do have a question for you, Joe, and it was sort of an extension of what Chris thought, because it's been on my mind. I think the reality is, not that we're necessarily getting complacent, but I think people are looking at the COVID that, you know, they had enough, and they're facing it with a different reality. And frankly, I believe, and only because of a couple friends and people that I know, that there were some folks that I know that very well could have had this thing and wrote it out at home because the symbols are somewhat milder than they used to be. Assuming, and that was alluded to in some of your comments and Chris's, so I think we're all pretty much on the same page with that. The two questions I have relating to that are, if someone does have that mild case at home, and they do ride it out and take a few days and feel better, number one, does that affect their chances of re-getting it, whether or not it would be more or less severe? And/or, how does that affect their ability to transmit that to someone else? So if, you know, present and future, thank you.
Infectious phase of COVID, and it's primarily when you have fever and are highly symptomatic. You also have a pre-symptomatic period, which is about 48 hours prior to symptom onset. You could be shedding enough virus to be infectious. What we're recommending and seeing is at least 24 hours of no fever, and your symptoms have resolved prior to kind of going back to work, that type of thing, and without use of any type of fever-reducing medicines like Tylenol.
Okay, so if you do that, and some people may do the routine thing of taking a few aspirin or Advil or Tylenol or whatever they get over the counter, the three or four days after that's gone, number one, does that have any effect on their chance of getting it again, whether it would be more or less severe? And/or, can they still transmit it to someone else?
So time is your friend, right? The longer from infection that you have, the lower your viral load is, so the less likely to transmit. The challenge that you have with people, especially with COVID, is you may have lingering coughs and other types of things and symptoms that are worrisome to individuals that are around them. So they may have, just like you would see with somebody who had bronchitis, and they kind of have a lingering cough, but they're not infectious. So the bottom line is, the recommendation is also if you're recently infected with COVID, to try and limit your exposure to other individuals. Let time be your friend. If you can, you know, kind of cover up or work in a private office, that type of thing, to try and just limit exposure and just let time pass until things resolve. No different than the flu or what you've seen with anything else that we work through. The second chapter is the reinfection rate. Yeah, there's always a chance of reinfection. We are seeing people getting reinfected. We've seen people that have been vaccinated get COVID. So, but what we're seeing is the reinfections, so long as there's not a new emerging variant that's going to be, provide a more significant type of illness, what we're seeing right now is their reinfections, their acuity is much less.
Okay, because traditionally, the understanding would be like getting the vaccination, the inoculation. Having it gives you some level of immunity that would reduce the ability to get it again in the future.
Yeah.
That's traditional, pretty much, with a lot of things I'm familiar with.
Yeah, it appears that there's some level of protection lingering on so that your body reacts to the presence of a virus early on. You may not get 100% protection, but at least your body's reacting to it sooner so that you, the theory is that you get a lesser viral load and you kind of recover quickly.
Okay, last but not least, some of us have had some encounters with this. Others haven't. To the best of my knowledge, I haven't gotten this thing. Now, we know about the reactions. I don't want to get into the shots. Might it be that I have an immunity because of all that? And I'm sure there are other people, as you know, yourself as well, were in the same case, but you got it.
Yeah, so the bottom line is, is that everybody, that's the challenge with COVID. It really depends on the individual, what their immune system does, and what underlying health conditions. So some people have very mild cases. I've had people that said that it just felt like they had a sinus infection or allergies, and we've had other people where you've seen catastrophic events occur. So that's the challenge with this, and that's why it was recommended to get vaccinated so that we can provide a level of community protection to kind of lower the risk and lower the hospitalization rates and ultimately lower death.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming, by the way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I'm going to dive into, recently, there's been lots of discussions about PAM, or Primary Amebic Menengioencephalitis caused by Negleria faleri, and I wanted to just share with you some updates and kind of some information, and then talk a little bit about our role and how we integrate into this response. So essentially, Enfalerias is an amoeba that lives primarily in freshwater, stagnant freshwater, especially in warm areas like lakes and rivers, hot springs. It can exist in underchlorinated, human-made specifics. So for example, a retention ditch or something like that. We've also heard of some cases where water treatment was not properly handled, right? So what happens with Enfalerias, and I'll show you a slide next, is that it penetrates into the sinus cavity and works its way into the cerebral spinal fluid in the brain, which is kind of the ideal environment for this to proliferate. And then unfortunately, you end up with a brain infection. It's extremely rare, extremely rare. Since 1962, there's only been 154 cases in the United States. So, and unfortunately, because brain infections are highly complex, and also earlier detection is important, that fatality is fairly significant with these type of cases. So the life cycle is just what I described. So you can see that it starts out in a cyst, and it can live in moist soils and things like that. It moves into a sort of an amoebic form, and then from there, through what we're seeing primarily in the conversations with my peers, is that you can, where water can become aerosolized or introduced into the nasal cavity, and then from there, the pathway I just described, that it works its way into the nasal mucosa and then migrates into the brain and then proliferates from there, causing damage. So the symptoms are severe headache, frontal headache, fever, nausea, vomiting, hallucination, stiff neck, altered mental status, seizures, and progresses rapidly to coma and death. Incubation is anywhere from one to nine days, but on average, it's about five. Duration is usually within 10 days of onset. Unfortunately, it can have fatal outcomes. Typically, it's within a week, three to seven days. And that's why early diagnosis and treatment is so important. So we work very, very closely with our medical providers to make sure that PAM is on the radar when you see this menu of symptoms. And just want to be clear that there's several other things that can cause these same symptoms. So it really depends on the pathogen, early detection, testing, and working through that. So when we look at the risk population, as I described before, it predominantly impacts males, although females have been impacted, and younger individuals, although older individuals have had this. We think that the reason for this, especially with young men, is that the vigorous play in water that they typically do, boys will be boys, and so as a result of that, the mist or moisture, or they go underwater, that type of thing, gets into the nasal cavity. And so that's sort of the correlation that we think is happening there. When we look at what types of bodies of water, you can see primarily it's lakes, ponds, and reservoirs as I described before. The idea of Negleria being present in brackish water can occur, although it's even more rare than in the freshwater bodies, okay? So I just wanted to make sure that you understand. So there's even been cases of tap water that may have not been properly treated, where individuals have gotten this. So how can we lower the risk? Basically, infection will always exist from exposure to warm freshwater lakes, rivers, and hot springs. Negleria faleri is, the only way to refrain from it is to avoid recreational freshwater activity, which, you know, we do every day. Measures that can help reduce the infection and lowering the chance of contaminated water is avoiding the activities of bodies of warm freshwater and hot springs, especially during periods of high temperature and low water volume, so meaning stagnant bodies of water. Holding your nose or using nose clips when engaging in freshwater activities, and then avoiding digging and stirring up the sediment because that cyst that I described earlier can stay within that sediment, and then while you're doing water-related activities in shallow, warm freshwater lakes. So where we're at right now is, the messaging really is that recreational users should assume that there's always a lower level of risk of Negleria faleri when entering all freshwater. always a lower level of risk of Negleria falari when entering all freshwater. The location and number of amoeba in the water can vary greatly over time, really depends on the conditions. So posting of the signs is unlikely to be effective in preventing infections. And posting of the signs can sometimes cause challenges because it might create a misconception that bodies of water that do not have the signs are free from Negleria. So it really can paint a false sense of security. And then testing of the freshwater is not recommended by the CDC because amoeba is naturally occurring, and there's no established relationship between the detection or concentration of Negleria falari and the risk of infection. So the goal here is lots of education for when entering into those activities. And so where we're at with, with the Health Department is our response is it's a reportable disease. We're notified even when it's, whenever a physician moves to test. And then from there, we, we work with the CDC, our labs, those physicians, and really try to rule out any other possible, possible case or definition, as well as provide whatever educational support we can do. We've been aware of this, this individual that's been on social media for quite some time. I'm not at liberty to discuss out of respect to privacy for that family, but we're doing everything we can possibly do to make sure that we're helping in every way we can. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Seau?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. During Citizens' input, there was some comment about water quality and the growth of this particular amoeba. Is there a relationship there?
So I, that was a great question. I did reach out to several other experts in the field, and, and what they're saying to me is that there's really, at this time, the data doesn't support a correlation between environmental degradation and presence of Negleria. And, and just with that as well, is there's also, there's really no agreed-upon acceptable limits of Negleria in a body of water. So you can, you can just assume that Negleria is, is in freshwater. And so that, that's why the testing component isn't there as well.
So my understanding is, there's really no mass treatment for water. I mean, there's, it's just naturally occurring in the environment.
It is in warm-
And it's all about education. And certain, yeah, when certain conditions exist.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and so if you look at the CDC page, you can see all the southern states have experienced Negleria. It's even been up as high as Minnesota in warm lakes. It's a global issue. It's not just to the United States. And, and, you know, because of the rarity, it makes it even harder to understand. And the good thing is, is more recently, medications have been developed and approved for treatment. And so really, the key is early detection, just like we're doing, and we're educating all of our providers to think about hepatitis and other types of things when they see certain presentations. And so the doctors are doing a great job in, in really keeping all of these things on their radar.
I think the county performs some water tests-
Mm-hmm.
-and specifically looking for this amoeba.
So we didn't do water testing for the amoeba because it's not recommended. What we do test for is bacteria levels in water. And so what we did was, we test, we test on a regular basis anyway. And, and pre-4th of July, all the way through till now, there's not been an alert level for any bacteria levels in, in Charlotte County. So we've been watching that very closely as well, especially because I received calls prior to the Freedom Swim, and whether or not that was something that was safe to do. And, and again, it goes back to the normal risk factors that we see, but the bacteria levels weren't exceeding any levels warning of alert.
So would your guidance to the county commission today be, basically make people aware of conditions that exist that are naturally occurring?
Yes, sir. So it's lots of really good education. We're putting out information all the time, and as well as we're, I had some conversations with Parks and Rec on how we can really tie into some of the education for our kids as they're, as they play. Because you have to understand that Negleria is, is in a lot of freshwater areas. There's been even cases where people were utilizing nasal irrigation and things like that, and ended up potentially infected. And then there's other been cases of splash pads and all kinds of other things. So really, that's why the importance of making sure that recreational waters that are, like pools and things like that, are properly chlorinated and tested and things like that. And then obviously, there's a risk factor when going into freshwater lakes.
And finally, Ms. Chair, I'd just like to say a word about Caleb Zieglebauer. He came up through the ranks in Little League. I know him and his family. Came up with my son. They're approximately the same age. And I don't want that to get lost in this technical study, you know. On behalf of the board, I mean, our hearts go out to the family. You know, it's got to be devastating to the family. And I don't want government to come off as being callous, you know, to what's going on with that family. It's just a real, it's a tragedy of epic proportion. You look at the numbers you presented, it's, it's, you know, it's one in a million to have something like this happen. While we don't know 100% if it's, if it's this amoeba, certainly, some of the symptoms, you know, point that way. We'll figure all, all that out at, at some point. But right now, there's a, there's a young man struggling for his life, and, and we shouldn't lose sight of that.
Agreed.
And, and we should make the public aware. This wasn't on my radar. I don't think it was on anybody's radar. I heard about these kind of cases up in Georgia. I seem to remember seeing articles on it, but it was so rare. And it kind of gets put on the back burner. You don't think about it. You know, but the question always is, is what can we do? And from the sound of it, other than, you know, education and getting the word out that this exists naturally, we can't eradicate it, if it, you know, in, in our bodies of water. And it's, it's fluid. It comes and goes depending on the conditions. It's a moving target. But I just wanted to say that, you know, at least, you know, our thoughts and prayers are, are there for the family and Caleb, and hope that he pulls, pulls through. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
And I share the sentiment with our team. We've been working very hard behind the scenes and being as respectful as we can be, and working just to make sure those doctors have everything they need. And we will drive whatever we need to get it there, whatever, as fast as we can do. We're really reaching out. I mean, the chain of communication has been all the way through, from at the local level, all the way up through state experts, up through the CDC, and then national experts. So there's a lot of people looking at this information to try and do what's best.
And, and there's a GoFundMe page set up. They're almost at their goal. But anybody who can help the family, the parents have enough on their plate right now with their son and the rest of their family members, you know, worrying about financing is, should be the last thing on their mind. So anybody who wants to give, go to the GoFundMe page and, and help out. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. And I know the board members reflect and agree with your comments. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update on both issues. Next, we're going to go to R2, West Coast Inland Navigational District's agenda. Mr. McBride?
Good morning, sir. Any commissioners? Justin McBride, Executive Director of the West Coast Inland Navigation District, for the record. Going over our agenda, you should have gotten an updated agenda from us either yesterday or the day before. Some minor changes, the biggest being we've changed the date. We had to push back one week because we weren't able to get a quorum. Our usual opening, 1 through 4, call, order, pledge allegiance. No deletions or additions at this time. Public comment, as usual. Under consent, we have the typical approval of minutes, approval of invoices, approval of financial statements. And this time around, we do have a budget amendment because we have received some unanticipated revenue grants and some DV restitution payments. No agency comments at this time. Under administrative agenda, the, the board will be looking at the budget for the first time in depth. They've asked for several scenarios specifically to look at options for funding the operations center, since we were not successful in securing state funding. So we've got some different scenarios to show them there. It's, this is also the, this is also the meeting in which the board will decide on whether or not to continue with our current legal services or we will find somebody new. Staff will be recommending that we keep our current. We're very happy with her. Under old business, we'll have a derelict vessel update. Of note for you guys, we have a contract out right now for four, one of which I believe is a removal in Charlotte County. We're also hosting a regional derelict vessel meeting for law enforcement and other folks. We've got some folks from Coast Guard, DEP, to talk about some angles to remove boats if they're leaking fuel. And then we also have some new updates to the laws coming down from Tallahassee. Also, we'll be giving an update on operations center construction, where we're at with our site and development plan, permits, things like that. I have no new business at this time. Our WCN Council will give, report. Under the executive director's report, probably the biggest thing to note is that our federal contact with the Army Corps of Engineers, our project manager, has moved on. So we have an interim one, but we had a really good conversation with them about two days ago, and we have a plan for the next five years. We have about $3.6 million from the federal government right now. We're going to be tackling some dredge projects, and we gave them their, our next five-year plan to continue things, moving along through the district at the federal level. Then we'll go to commissioners' items and public comment. I stand open for any questions.
Thank you, sir, for the update. Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
As always.
All right. Next, do you want, do you want to go ahead and come forward, sir? We're going to go to R3, and we'll follow that with R4. You can, if you use the other one, it should work for you without having to hold it. If that one works, that's fine. You can just put, put that, pull it forward. You should be fine. It should pick it up up well.
All right. Good morning, county commissioners.
Morning. Morning.
My name is Dewan Harris. I'm the staff director of the Charlotte County Pottegorda MPO. And I'm here this morning to give you guys an overview of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Federal Discretionary Grant Program.
Thank you. Just turn it the right direction.
I'm here to give you guys an overview of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Federal Discretionary Grant Program. Very happy to be here to give this overview. I presented to the MPO Board and the city of Pottegorda, and also looking for a letter of support for the MPO's efforts in applying for the Safe Streets for All Grant Program. First slide gives the eligible recipients of this grant. MPOs are eligible. And talk, conversations with my colleagues around the state, everyone's excited about this grant program. There's a lot of flexibility in this grant program, a lot of funding over the next five years. I'll get to that in the next slide. Next recipients that are eligible are political subdivisions of a state. These are simply jurisdictions that were created under the state's authority, counties, cities, transit authorities, townships, et cetera, et cetera. Federally recognized tribal governments are eligible. And eligible activities for this grant. What sets this grant, Federal Discretionary Grant Program, apart from others, is that this grant is not just for shovel-ready projects. This grant program is, you can develop a comprehensive safety action plan. I've got a very detailed slide that will show exactly what the government's looking for, for the safety action plan. You can do design, planning studies, construction, and engineering with this, with these federal discretionary grant dollars. Okay, so the funding for this grant, there's a billion appropriated annually over the next five years, so five billion total. So it's quite a bit of, of funding that's being allocated for this grant. At least 40% of the grant allocation will be used for implementation, for action plans, excuse me. And the balance of the funding will be used for implementation of capital improvement projects. There's a 20% local cash match that's required for the grant funding. And I've had previous conversations with administration and budget, and the counties agreed to provide that 20% local match. Thank you. Very gracious of you. And, next slide. Next slide shows a very detailed definition of a comprehensive safety action plan. Essentially, when you look at this, this is what the government wants to see, are the steps that your jurisdiction is taking to address the target zero or vision zero. And vision zero is simply, what, what measures are you taking to move towards a safe system approach, where you're looking to eliminate or reduce fatalities and serious injuries on public roadways? And last slide, next steps. So where, where I am now, I'm making the rounds of soliciting support, letters of support. That's why I'm here today. I'm gathering data for the action plan grant application. I have to get all my technical questions in by August 15. I'll have the grant application for the comprehensive safety action plan in by September 15. I anticipate the notice of award will be announced sometime in the fall or winter of this year. And my estimate for development of an action plan for Charlotte County will take about a year. And after the action plan is adopted and approved, then you can go after capital improvement implementation dollars. The grant amount that you can ask for, for capital improvement projects, the minimal is 55 million, and the max is 50 million. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioner Seau?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yes, I'm looking at the timelines here. There's an application deadline, September 15, which is right around the corner.
Yes.
But, and as I listen to you further, when do you need to have the projects for the application identified? Is that prior to submittal, or you can go back?
No, you, there's a contingency that you have to have the action plan in place first. So you have to have the comprehensive safety action plan implemented and adopted before you can go after capital improvement project dollars.
Okay, so the technical question deadline is August 15.
Yes.
Obviously, we're not here. And some of these dates, you know, like application deadline is September 15, we're essentially just getting back. How are you able to perform according to these deadlines and dates?
With the questions?
Yeah, yeah, to, to have the application deadline. I mean, how, how do you get the application done and, and your technical questions deadline? How, how are all those dates achieved?
Oh, the technical questions, they're ongoing. So as questions come in, as I'm applying for the grant, or I'm partnering with other people, I get a question. I submit those questions to USDOT. They take about two to three days to respond. So that's ongoing. So we're well ahead of the, of the schedule and the timeline for-
Okay, so I'm looking, like, our next agenda item is the Veterans Corridor Study. Obviously, that is teed right up for a program like this.
Yes.
Along with probably a whole host of other road projects we have throughout the county, which I assume you're going to work with staff to see which infrastructure improvements we have in the CIP will match up with this grant.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm, I'm coordinating with Public Works, John Elias and his staff, and, and also I'm partnering with District 1 Safety Office for roads that are not on the county system or the city system. So any, any federal aid eligible road will be eligible for this federal, federal funding.
And do those programs that we identify, is that part of the September 15 application deadline?
The September 15?
Yeah.
Repeat the question again?
Are all the infrastructure projects you're working on with staff, are those all going to be identified by the application deadline of September 15?
No, there had, those projects have to be identified in the comprehensive safety action plan first. So the comprehensive safety action plan will, will essentially prioritize and list out projects as they should be addressed. Similar to what we do in the MPO process, we prioritize, and then we address those projects as funding is available.
Okay. And you mentioned the dollar amount. I, I kind of got lost in translation. Did you say 5 million to 50 million?
For capital improvement projects, the minimal is $5 million for, for an ask, and the maximum is $50 million for capital improvement projects.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
But you can only go for those projects after you adopt and implement a comprehensive safety action plan.
Right. Okay, got, got it. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Quit.
Thank you. Am I next?
Yeah.
Says two.
I haven't taken-
Thank you.
Mr. Seau out yet?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So could components of projects be listed in this? For instance, we're working on Harborview. We're working on getting the whole thing done. We've, we've gotten the design done. We're purchasing right-of-way. We've advanced dollars to do that. Where the whole concept, as we discussed at the MPO meeting, is to have the whole thing stem to stern, shovel-ready.
Yes.
But the sidewalks, the pathways, some of the intersections, the roundabouts, some of those things could be classified as components. And is that what this is? It won't pay for the whole project, but it could be another bucket of money to pay for the safety aspect of any of the multiple projects we're doing. Even, well, Edgewater's not on the MPO, but, you know, but any of those larger projects that we're doing. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is correct. The roundabout projects are safer than, you know, a typical intersection. However, you know, if, if they're called out in the comprehensive safety action plan, those projects can be addressed. So any federal A eligible road where you're showing an improved safety benefit, that, that funding can be applied to those projects.
Okay. So Vermont Road, because it's a.
Stole your fire, sir. You gotta be quicker than the button.
Vermont. Vermont Road, which is definitely becoming a huge concern of ours, as was Burnstall Road, you know, two decades ago, and finally, we've taken the time to get through that.
Yes.
And adding passing lanes or, or any kind of additional pedestrian parts or, or, you know, all of that stuff. But it's not a state road. Is it still eligible because it would be part of our, our personal work program?
Every, every road in, in Charlotte County that's a federal A eligible road is eligible for this funding. Yes.
Okay. And if it, if it somehow gets elevated into the SIS, probably it even becomes more eligible because of, it's now.
Yes.
It's now in the state realm.
Right.
So to speak. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Doherty.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, I think when you say eligible, it would be our county collector road system, not our local streets per se, right?
No.
Right. So it'd be our, our tierials and collectors and so forth.
Right.
And I was going to mention Burn, Vermont Road, County Road 74, obviously, if that's included in this, that's, that could be a important thing. This has been a matter of conversation. I'm on NACO's National Association of Counties Transportation Committee and this, this topic about how we were going to do it and the deadlines for all these applications, what, when do you, when do you file? This is great. I mean, this is great. Finally seeing now how we can plug into that money and it's encouraging.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. All right. Well, then I will entertain the motion for approval.
Go move.
And this is including the direction as we've discussed and also the letter of support.
A and B. Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Now let's go right into Veterans Boulevard. While we're talking transportation, let's keep it going.
Vitor Suguri, District One FDOT, and I'm the project manager for the Veterans Boulevard Corridor Study. And I have with me today Babuji with VHP. He's the consultant PM on the project. And today's presentation is the final recommendations, final draft recommendations, because we're still going to get some comments today, but it's what we have come up so far. And just for information, the corridor study covers from US 41 all the way to King's Highway. It's about seven miles of corridor and we're focusing on some of the major intersections along the corridor. So I'll go briefly go over the study purpose and objectives, the methodology, how we analyze it, program and planned projects, some of the already projects that are in the LRTP or in the work program. And then Babuji is going to go over our draft recommendations, the study timeline, where we are, and next steps. So the purpose and objectives is very similar to what we have done with State Road 776. We are trying to improve safety, mobility, and connectivity for all modes. And some of the major concerns we heard early was the capacity and operational improvements with the caveat that capacity that we're looking here is not widening the corridor. It's looking for ways to improve capacity and how traffic is flowing through the corridor. Also, new traffic controls. We understand there are some intersections that need some improvements in terms of traffic control, so we're looking at those. And our objective is to conduct safety, operational, and multimodal analysis, so looking at the safety at intersections, how they're operating, and how it integrates different modes. So as I mentioned before, we're looking at intersection-specific improvements, no widening to Veterans Boulevard. And we are identifying prioritizing short, mid, and long-term improvements. And the dates that we have here for short, mid, and long term, those are variables. Short term is the more immediate needs that we see and the low-hanging fruits, things that we can get done on a little bit quicker. And the long-term improvements are improvements that we might not have the need right now, but just forecasting traffic of 2045, 2050, that's when we are going to see the need. So we're just anticipating those needs and that's why we have it long-term. So our study methodology, we look at some key elements, so existing and anticipated traffic volumes. Again, going back to what I mentioned about know what's more immediate, what's in the future. We also conducted field observations, going out to the specific intersection and observing traffic, what are the patterns, what issues we, we might have. We look at historical crash data back in five years of history. We conducted operational analysis to see how signals and intersections are, are functioning. We had some stakeholder input, which is the MPO and county staff. We did a CAPX analysis, which is a high-level intersection analysis of turn movements and how things are functioning. We look at program and planning improvement projects. We want to see what's already coming, what's already programmed, so we don't duplicate any efforts and we can maybe make some recommendations to things that are upcoming. We look at published guidelines. We, we have, our FDOT has a standard for how we design intersections, how we look at roadways, but also the state has some guidelines, so we use those. And we look at similar projects, what worked, what doesn't work, some innovative ideas that can help. And some of the improvement types that you're going to see throughout the corridor are turn lanes, some operational improvements. I know we talked a little bit about how signal timing and, you know, making those work a little bit smarter, smarter with other signals when, you know, during peak hours, off-peak hours, so operational improvements that way. Innovative intersection types, we talked about safety. So there are benefits of different types of intersections, so we're going to explore some of those. Safety, what are some of the most current crashes? How can we address some of these safety needs on, on the roadway? Multimodal ADA in a lot of the projects, at least with FDOT, whenever a new project comes in, we address bringing ADA up to compliance, so we're going to make those recommendations. Lighting, making sure lighting is adequate and proper on all the intersections. It was noted, there are lighting throughout the corridor, but there are different types of lighting. Intersections might need a brighter or a different kind of light for better visibility, so those are kind of things we have recommended. And also ITS with intelligent transportation systems, going to prepare the corridor for future technology, connected vehicles, autonomous vehicles, also for emergency evacuation to post signals for real-time traffic. So if traffic needs to be diverted somewhere, it can alert drivers ahead of time. So, but these are just a, a short list of improvement types that you're going to see today. So some of the program improvement projects, again, there's no capacity improvement projects, meaning there's no widening projects for Veterans Boulevard. There's capital improvement program for sidewalk installation to be constructed in 2023. Those are, are filling some of the gaps in the sidewalk. And there's the expansion of the link, Charlotte Link, a two-miles radius around Port Charlotte Town Center. And here's just a snapshot, a graphic view of those improvement projects. Here, we're highlighting things that we are considering. So the intersection at Paulson and Veterans Boulevard, King's Highway, Peachland, and the blue dot, here is a possible connection between Rain Tree and Veterans Boulevard. It is dependent on many different moving pieces, being one, the interchange with I-75, which we're still not sure when, how it's going to happen. There are studies going on in coordination with the county, but we are just being mindful of that connection. Planned multimodal improvements. So it shows that there are bicycle and pedestrian needs throughout the corridor and this will be up to the county to decide what standards and what type of facility they think will best suit the facility. We do have FDOT standards for state facilities, but we want to leave it up to the county to decide which one is best. But there are needs for bicycle and pedestrian. And I'll be handing off to Babuji. He's going to go over some of the improvements and our recommendations.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Babuji Ambikapati. I'm from VHB, consultant for FDOD District One. So as Vitor mentioned, we looked at traditional as well as innovative capacity improvements. Some of the safety benefits is listed here. For example, when we include an exclusive right-hand lane, we can have 11% reduction of all crash types. Similar to that, when you have an additional left-turn lane, it produces 4% reduction. And as you can see here, one thing where I want to highlight it is the traffic signal, even though it reduces 23% fewer crashes, the roundabout, it can cause, reduce 90%, 90% fewer fatalities and the crashes would be of less severity. And we also wanted to introduce restricted crossing U-turn where you could have 20% reduction in all crash types. In addition to the traditional and innovative improvements, we also looked at the safety as well as multimodal, as well as ADA improvements. So some of the improvements are, can be applied to any, any intersection. For example, placing the retro reflective back plates to the signal heads, so you'll have less glare when you're driving. And also placing the high-friction surface treatment, it will help to reduce crashes during the rain and also tightening the corner radiator, so the people will not speed when making turns. So we looked at several of the study intersections. The first intersection we looked at is, was the Veterans Boulevard at Moraduck Circle and Paulson Drive. The low-hanging fruit, as Vitor mentioned, was the signal coordination between US 41, Moraduck Circle, Paulson Drive, and Cochrane Boulevard. I think that could be accomplished sooner, so you will, you know, have some more efficient flow of traffic there. As the time period grows, we forecasted the traffic as Vitor mentioned. So by 2035, you probably need the additional southbound through and additional northbound through and an exclusive westbound right. And again, we also for, the, show the need for an exclusive eastbound right at this study Next is Cochrane Boulevard. We worked extensively with county staff to, because they are already designing this intersection at the 60% level they are at this point of time. So we coordinated with them. We have come up with several improvements at this intersection. So as I mentioned, the low-hanging fruit is the signal coordination, but in addition to that, we also feel that an exclusive eastbound right, as well as providing additional lanes for the both northbound approach and the southbound approach would be needed for this intersection as soon as possible. And down the road, we also recommended for an additional second westbound left turn to make this intersection more efficient. Next is the Atwater Intersection. So continuing the same process, we are recommending an additional southbound left and extending the northbound left for this intersection during the short term and including an additional eastbound right or exclusive eastbound right and an exclusive westbound right in the midterm. Yorkshire Street, you are, the county had initially created a median plan all the way to Yorkshire Street in, in 1990s. So this is one of the important intersection and there are several angle crashes and left-hand crashes at this intersection. To make it more safer, which is one of the important objectives of the study, we recommend an unsignalized restricted crossing U-turn at this intersection and also providing an exclusive eastbound right and exclusive westbound right. However, as Vitor mentioned, there are several moving pieces at the potential interchange of I-75, whether it's going to be Yorkshire or Rain Tree. It all depends upon the coordination between the county, beside the county, as well as Northport, FDOT, and so forth. Having said that, at sometime down the road, we probably need to consider a signalized full median opening or a roundabout at that intersection, so.
That's what I was going to ask. Wouldn't the roundabout be the best solution?
Yes. That'd be good. So that's, that's what we recommend. And next is the intersection of Harbor Boulevard. We looked at the traffic volumes. It does meet a warrant for a traffic signal and we also want to consider the roundabout. As I mentioned, roundabouts have less severity in crashes and less fatalities, so it will be a good candidate for this intersection. And additionally, exclusive eastbound right is also recommended at this intersection.
Commissioner Constance?
I'm going to wait till you.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So the next intersection was Orlando Boulevard. Again, the county staff also expressed concern over the traffic control of this intersection. So we looked at the traffic volumes. It does need a traffic signal, signal, but we are also recommending to look at both options at this intersection also. In addition to this traffic control change, we are recommending an exclusive southbound left and a shared southbound through and right for both northbound approach as well as southbound approach and also an exclusive eastbound right for this intersection. Next, we looked at the Torrington Street. We don't see this intersection needing any traffic signal now or in the future, so we are recommending an unsignalized restricted crossing U-turn because of several angle crashes and left-hand crashes. We are also recommending an exclusive westbound right and an exclusive eastbound right at this intersection. So as, when we presented initially our existing conditions report, there was concern about the cut-through traffic using the Norman Street, basically from the Citizens Advisory Committee as well as from the commissioners. So we included the intersection of Norman Street as part of our study. So we are again recommending an exclusive eastbound right to make it more efficient as well as an unsignalized restricted crossing U-turn at this intersection. To accomplish this restricted crossing U-turn, which we can see in the figure here, you need to provide an U-turn, a median opening east of the intersection to accommodate U-turns. Next intersection is the Lowland Boulevard. As you all know, Lowland Boulevard, it's a right-in, right-out intersection. You cannot make a northbound left turn. So because of this, there is some cut-through traffic which Norman Street experiences. However, if you treat Lowland Boulevard in the future appropriately, you will not see the cut-through, cut-through traffic at Norman Street. So one of the recommendations we recommend is providing a median U-turn outside the curve to make it more safe, so people can make safer U-turns and also providing eastbound right turn. However, down the road, there's a possibility of looking at making the north Orlando Boulevard and Lowland Boulevard as one intersection and providing a, like an oval-type roundabout to accomplish the, the, make it more safer. So as Vitor mentioned, next we have the two closely spaced intersections, namely the Peachland Boulevard and King's Highway. Even though they are planned in the long-range transportation plan, there are some money allocated. However, as Duane mentioned, if we, the county is successful in getting the grant, this could be applied for these intersections immediately. So basically, the Peachland Boulevard as well as the King's Highway. So some of the things, what we would recommend immediately is, there is a system of intersections at Peachland Boulevard, King's Highway, and the two ramp terminals at I-75 and King's Highway. So we would recommend a signal coordination study to be done for these four intersections. So even though two of the intersections are outside our study, but still, we have to look at as, look for of them as a system. So that's our initial recommendation. And to make the Peachland Boulevard intersection more efficient, we feel that the westbound approach can be made right only and people can make the westbound left turn and westbound through in the form of an U-turn along Veterans Boulevard at Daleway. I'm going to show you in the figure next slide, just to continue on. We also recommend three northbound lifts, one northbound through, and a shared northbound through right at Peachland intersection. I'm going to show you in the next graphic how we'll be able to accomplish it. So similar to Peachland, we also recommend King's Highway, as I mentioned, the signal coordination. And for the southbound approach, in the short term, we recommend, we need, we recommend three southbound lifts and one southbound through right. However, down the road, we probably need to think about adding a exclusive southbound through there. And I think this. And I think these two intersections have been benefited by the DRI in the past. Several of the improvements has been paid by the DRI developers. So this is a figure which I wanted to show you. So first thing I would like to show you is the westbound right turn. So we are prohibiting the westbound through and westbound left at Peachland. So they will be making a U-turn at Daleway and Veterans Boulevard, and then they can accomplish their turning movements. And the third left turn at the northbound approach of Veterans and Peachland is, can be accomplished because currently you have a left turn going into the shopping center. So we recommend that to be made right in, right out and continue and drop it as a left turn lane further, further west. So that's how you can accomplish the three left turn. That could be accomplished by restryping, so that should be, we can accommodate that. And so the insert B, which is where I'm mentioning about dropping the third receiving lane as a left turn lane. And as I mentioned, we are also recommending the three southbound left at King's Highway and one through and one southbound right to accommodate the 2045 traffic conditions. So in addition to the auto intersections, we are also recommending the multimodal. So constructing sidewalks where we have gaps as well as upgrading the paved shoulder to meet FDM standards, or it could be even the county standards. As Victor mentioned, there is discussion of increasing the two mile radius around the Port Charlotte Town Center starting in 2024, and that, this is also included in this study. So lighting recommendations, as Victor mentioned, even though the lighting is prevalent along the entire corridor, however, the majority of the intersections has only two luminaries. So as we recommended, perform a lighting justification study and to make it, and as part of the study outcome, we could, we'll have several recommendations to make the intersection safer. And as Victor mentioned, one of the main low hanging fruit is to make sure that we have the advanced traffic management system on Veterans Boulevard through the fiber optic cable connection all the way to King's Highway, but we should also include the two newly programmed or the proposed signal locations along the system. And then the, to make it future ready for the corridor, we recommend that we have a CB Technology Corridor. This is what we recommended for State Road 776 also. So since Veterans Boulevard is a continuation of 776, I think it's applicable to this corridor also. So based upon our steady operation analysis, crash rates, as well as coordination between the MPO staff and the county staff and our engineering judgment, these are the rankings we came up with, the prioritization of intersections along Veterans Boulevard. So as I mentioned, Cochrane is number one because the county has already spent money and ready to put it in action, so that's number one. And King's Highway and Peachland is, we don't need any discussion further on that. So we have, it's two and three. And as you can see, you know, the ranked number 10 and 11 are down because they have less traffic and they can withstand some additional traffic before it gets worse. So the next step is, as Victor mentioned, this is the place where we are doing the draft final recommendations. So any input we get from you all, we will list it in our report and make one more final round of presentation to the TACCSE and the MPO Board and submit the report in October 22. So thanks for giving us an opportunity to present here, and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. First in the queue is Commissioner Constance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, thank you for coming. Really appreciate the presentation, really appreciate the hard work. You really dove deeply on this and you covered all the bases. I really appreciate the very comprehensive study that you presented here. So I'm going to kind of go back to the beginning. So no capacity increases, but there are, there is room for sidewalks?
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, there's, in the right of way, we can safely move some bicycles and pedestrians on sidewalks, or at least pedestrians on sidewalks, without affecting capacity, but we don't have, there's room to do that, but there's not room to add any,
We don't see the need for additional lanes along Veterans Boulevard. And however, we feel that we need to have, make sure that the sidewalks are connected along the corridor, so that there's no gaps. And the one question I want to make sure that we do not look into the right of way for accommodation, that needs to be looked in as we go into further design.
Good, I'm glad I asked, but that's, I appreciate that. And that makes sense that you don't want to have somebody take a sidewalk and then it ends, and then it's going to be a safety concern until they can jump to the next piece of sidewalk. Okay, let's skip down to, so I think your restricted crossing U-turn intersections are very interesting, and they do make a lot of sense. And I think like a roundabout, once you start using them and you figure out what you can and can't do, you'll start to incorporate that behavior in, but it definitely looks safer. So if I can't go across, I make the right, I immediately make a U-turn, and now I've essentially made a left, and now I'm heading in the direction I want, but I have spacing and I have visibility and I'm not going to get a T-bone crash or any kind of a major interaction that way. So that makes a lot of sense. I guess my, my only concern is investing in that only to turn around and then maybe build a roundabout. So I think as we, you know, for some of these intersections, as we look at them, I personally might say, nice in theory and on paper, I think we can wait a year or two and actually roll out the roundabout. One of the things that we've dealt with is the fact that the speeds are exceeding what they are posted at. I think a series of roundabouts is going to solve that. So, you know, I really appreciate the comments and the opportunities that have been presented because I think as we go forward, where they are applicable, even on some of the larger ones, you know, I've driven a lot up to Sarasota and have seen, you know, multiple size, small, medium, and large, integrated. The newest one is down, we just was there with it Sunday at the Ringling Bridge where they're installing that very large roundabout. That is going to be, there's already one at the end of Fruitville, which is working really well, and now the much larger one at the, basically the base of that Ringling Bridge. It's going to be a time saver, a safety, you know, it's just going to, it's going to move things so well. And that's a very large installation, a very high volume area. So I'm thinking that there may be other applications in other parts of the county, but I do like your oval interpretation of a roundabout for Yorkshire, Harbor and.
Lowland.
Lowland, yes, Lowland and, yes.
Or Orlando Boulevard.
Yep. Lowland and Orlando, right. So that, that makes a lot of sense. And so if we have two or three or four of these roundabouts, it's really going to cut down speeds, and I think it's going to add to the safety profile. Really appreciate what you presented. It's a lot for us to incorporate, but you know, I think it's going to just generate more and more discussions as time goes on, that we can integrate better ideas into the final plan.
Just to add what the Commissioner mentioned, the restricted crossing U-turn is basically to help reduce the severity of the crashes before spending a lot of money. So that helps to reduce the crash by 20%. But however, since we have a high speed corridor, because 50 and 55 and 45, so just placing a roundabout at Yorkshire alone will not solve this issue. So we may have to consider roundabout at Yorkshire or Harbor or Orlando Boulevard and maybe Lowland. Then you have four roundabouts, then you have a series of.
That's exactly where I'm headed. I don't think one is going to do the trick, but a series of them makes a lot of sense. And I think people will incorporate it into their behaviors, and then they'll know when I go up there, I've got to go slower, like if I go on Edgewater. You know, it's a lower speed limit and we have roundabouts on there, and it just works. So that, as we have more of these around the county, I think people will start to understand the sensibility of tick plan for a little more time to get where you need to go and get there safely. But no, I think it's, I think it's an excellent execution here. Thank you very much.
And I saw heads nodding when the latter comment about the four, including Lowland and North Orlando. I saw Commissioner Doherty's head agreeing, my head's bobbing, and I really believe that that's going to be the right thing.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I have one more question. So with regard to cost, and I don't know if you're on this, but if we were to signalize an intersection or do a restricted intersection, which is less expensive? The restricted intersection?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, because, because the lights and the box and the arms and all the, and maintenance and all of those things. So that even, you know, that's a nice backup if we're not going to signalize to do something like that. I've not seen it before, but boy, that's, I've tucked it away now. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I shared some of those same, your last comment about the cost. So what would be nice, if we can get it, is for each short, mid, and long term, an engineer's estimated, estimated costs. So we can look at, to your point about, let's just take Yorkshire Street. They're suggesting in the short term, we go with an R-cut, but in the midterm, a full signalized intersection. So we're going to spend whatever that dollar amount is for an R-cut, only to rip it out and put in a signalization. It's obviously going to be in 10 years, way more expensive to do the signalization, which it looks like we're going to need as opposed to trying to budget for it now, because it's inevitable, you know, at least based on, on what this report is saying. And also just thank you to FDOT for letting us kind of piggyback on your 776 corridor study to add this segment. This is why we wanted to do that, because this is really important to the, to the Commissioner and to the county with, obviously you've identified all the problems we were having there based on, you know, the results of this report. Yeah, so I was trying to understand how this R-cut works, and it looked kind of funky and confusing, a lot of arrows, a lot of turns. But when I blow up the one, and I picked Yorkshire Street, and I zoomed in on it, and I want to make sure I'm reading this right. If you, if you pull up a, an R-cut specification, yeah, I zoomed in on it, it looks like you're showing the median improvements with, with all these U-turns, but also a signal.
No, that's right. That could be an unsignalized restricted crossing, or it could be signalized too, depending upon the traffic condition.
Okay, so the R-cut will include some type of signaling device?
If you warrant a traffic signal. For example, if it's a, less amount of traffic is coming from the side streets, you don't need a signal. So this is the figure, this is called a signalized restricted crossing U-turn, but there is unsignalized conditions also.
Okay. So for this, for Yorkshire, you're recommending the R-cut with signals?
Yeah.
For this one?
I'm sorry, it's a wrong, we need to remove the signals. That, at least for the short term, there's no signals needed.
Okay.
In the future, in the midterm, we need a signal or a roundabout.
Okay, so that's an error on here?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, because I keep looking at this, and it looks like a hybrid of a signalized intersection, but with the R-cut.
It's a good point, yeah, but, yeah, there's no signal recommended for the short term.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I bet you they just grabbed an image of an R-cut, and it happened to have the lights in there.
Yeah.
Well, we're approving it, so that's why we're here to.
Yes, sir.
Because they want a recommendation to move forward. Okay, so not every R-cut's going to be signalized? Okay, all right. So we'll clean that up on all of them. I just picked that one. Because I was trying to figure out, you're saying no signalization, but it's showing signals. So what you're looking from us today is just to approve or make comments on this plan, so you can move forward and do what you have to do in terms of final submission of this plan, because FDOT's not paying for any of these improvements. This is all on the county.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's up to us if we want to decide, once we plug in numbers, what elements we want to do. So we may agree to short, mid, and long term improvements, but it's up to us to decide if we want to advance some of those.
Correct.
We're not prohibited from that. It's not going to put us in some type of position where FDOT's going to have an issue with that.
Right, and we just want our, our final study to be as final for it, for the county as it can be in terms of priority ranking, so that we don't invert the rankings and the county say, well, this is no good, we need to redo everything. So as final as it can be, so you guys don't have to do any tweaking or, you know, revision, but as, the final decision is up to the, to the county.
Yeah, but once we approve the plan, let's say next year we decide we want to be flexible and move some of these things around. We're not prohibited from that. We're not in violation of some FDOT guideline or something.
At least you're going to have your guide say, this is what was recommended, but things changed.
Right, okay.
At least you have a starting point.
And I appreciate the fact you've identified exclusive turn lanes, eastbound and westbound. Those were like the low hanging fruit to me, to get people out of that 55 mile an hour and to safely make their right turn, that was paramount. You didn't take into consideration swift mud in some of these improvements. I mean, because I guess that would be for us internally if we decide, because that's going to be another thing, you're going to have, we have all the drainage there, and if we're going to do turn lanes and expand for those lanes, we're going to have to take it out of the retention ponds there.
Yeah, that will be accomplished during the design phase.
Yeah, it's a design thing. Let me see what else. And just in case y'all didn't know, it looks like we just installed some speed feedback signs along Veterans. I saw them go up yesterday or the day before, where I guess it'll show your speed. It's a radar, what they call radar feedback signs. So hopefully that'll have, you know, help a little bit with people being aware of how fast they're actually going. That's all my comments, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Not move approval of recommendations of the FDOT corridor study.
Motion second, is there further discussion?
Just a question. So again, this is, this is a flexible document, even though we're approving it, this is the final, but we can still go in there and, and jump, as the Commissioner said, and say, you know, rather than spend for this, we might have to wait a little bit, but let's go to the second, second level and actually execute that first. And, and it gives us a basis for us to start doing some studying about what are the costs. And I guess one question I would have, though, is if we were going to put roundabouts in a series of three or four roundabouts, would it be possible for you guys to kind of look at it and prioritize how they go in? So if we had so many dollars per year and we were going to do one a year, what would that, what would that look like?
I believe that will have to be coordinated with county and PO staff.
Okay. I'm just, on an engineering standpoint, knowing the traffic flow, knowing what you've looked at, you know, what would, what would be the sequencing, I guess, is really what I'd like to know, if you had an opinion about that.
They have the ranking up there, and I would imagine it would fall pretty similar to that.
And also I would like, for example, just based on engineering judgment, I would put one roundabout at Yorkshire, and then the furthest one, Orlando, so that you have a spacing.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Doherty.
Yeah, just was a comment that the final report, final, final report will include your, the recommended conceptual opinions of cost for the difference. Can you do that? That's what I understood, you were looking for that.
Was that part of their, I thought our staff.
Part of your scope, or is it?
Our staff.
Our staff?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We'll see, it's, you know, at some point. Pretty good.
Mr. Scurry and Mr. Ambikapati, thank you very much. It's obvious you know the material, because you zipped through that presentation, sir, without hesitation, and I really appreciate the details that you went into. I, I think this is a menu for us to choose from as we move forward, and it's, for me, it's very clear how I think we want to proceed, but we'll have input from staff, obviously, when they start looking at, you know, costing of options and so on. So if there are no further questions or comments?
Yeah, this will be a big workshop item. Once we can get the costs together, we'll be plowing through this thing.
Yes, sir, absolutely. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to go to R6, the initiation and prosecution of injunctions to enforce stop work orders.
Commissioners, normally when we go to file suit against somebody, we bring the individual matter to your attention, but we have a situation that's occurring on Wadsworth, 12134 Wadsworth, where the property owner is Southern Impressive Homes LLC, contractor is CKF Construction Services, and the property's been posted with a stop work order. Somebody ripped it down and continues to operate in defiance of the stop work order. So as another, we will obviously work with code enforcement and CILB and do our letter, our demand letters to the company and the property owner. But given your break and to the extent we need to act quickly, we want to have the authority to go in and enforce the stop work order with an injunction at court. And it would be not only this, this resolution is more of a blanket resolution authorizing us to do it, because if we have to wait two weeks, it kind of takes away the, the threat of litigation from the.
Thank you, Commissioner Sale.
Well, that was my question, because this is supposed to be more broad, because it's specific in the language. So if it's supposed to be more broad, I kind of have an issue, because this is specific to a stop work order by the county engineer, and it kind of talks about specifically drainage operation, but what about all the other stop work orders that are issued by a building official or other officials that are non-drainage related?
If you're comfortable doing that, we could just say that somebody who violates stop work orders, to make it even broader.
Make that as a amendment.
Yeah, well, I'll amend, well, I didn't make a motion yet.
No motion been made, so he can make the motion.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
And we will still obviously bring them back to you for your information, so you know what it is that we're doing.
Okay, so, all right, so you'll have to re, we'll be approving this, you know, but you're going to have to recraft it with more broader language to include all building, all officials or authorized.
I would say violations of all stop work. I would say violations of all stop work orders.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, and I would make a motion to approve this resolution, adding that language changes to include stoppage of work for all, wait a minute.
Violations of all stop work orders.
All stop work, yeah.
I was going to bring that up. There are a number of sites around the county right now. This isn't just one. There's a number of them that have dirt piled up and blocking drainage, and block stacked up and blocking drainage. And there's nothing going on in a lot of these sites. We really need to get in front of this. I appreciate this resolution. I highly support it. It's, I'm afraid we're getting, going to get into a time, and Mr. Bailey's in the room, he knows, but I'm afraid we're going to have a lot more problems on sites that you're not going to see work continue. That's where I think we're headed right now. So it's going to be very important to be able to take care of these situations. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition to the motion, it passes unanimously. Now we'll go to R one.
And then the public hearing?
Yeah. I'm keeping Rick at bay for a while.
Morning Commissioners, Kent Stecker, Utilities Department.
Is there a mic on?
Hit the green button.
Green? If it's green, you should be on.
So, good morning, there we go. Kent Stecker, Utilities Department. I just wanted to run through the Peace River, Minnesota Regional Water Authority, Board of Directors meeting agenda. And I'll just highlight the major items. If you have any questions, just let me know. So to start off, a public hearing for the budget for the fiscal year '23. Then they go through adopting the budget for the fiscal year '23. And then their consent agenda. They have a resolution 2022-06 for the Florida Water Professionals Month. They have a U.S. Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement for Monitoring in the Peace River. They do an annual regulatory plan for 2022 and 2023. They do a renewal of system-wide benefit project credit line with PNC Bank. There's a change order number two for contract with Poole and Kent for Trains Five and Six Rehabilitation Project at the Peace River Facility. They have filter valves and actuators for Peace River Facilities Trains Seven and Eight. This is an owner-direct purchase for that. There's a first amendment to interlocal agreement for Regional Integrated Loop System Phase Three-C Interconnect between Peace River, Minnesota Regional Water Supply Authority and Sarasota County.
We stopped there.
Yeah.
So just going back, the authorizing of issuance of an amended and restated line of credit. Apparently, they have a line of credit, but as they pay it back, they don't get credit on the credit. They, it starts to sunset, basically. So they had to go out for another, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of.
Doesn't sound like a line of credit, does it?
No, it's just, you know, you can use up to $5 million, and then when you've used it, that's it, you know, pay it back, it's a new, so basically, they're getting a new ability to loan out. And I think... I think that was it. Okay, yeah, that was the one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regular agenda.
Yeah, regular agenda.
Regular agenda, all right. They go over water supply conditions. They go over projects for the Swift Mud fiscal year 2024 Cooperative Funding Initiative. There is six projects listed. Would you like me to read each of those projects? I will, go ahead.
You can go ahead, Retho.
Yeah, okay, I'll go ahead. Peace River Reservoir Number Three Project, the Regional Integrated Loop System Phase Three-C Interconnect Design Build, the Regional Integrated Loop System Phase Two-B Interconnect Design Build, the Integrated Regional Water Supply Master Plan for 2025, Partially Treated Water Aquifer Storage and Recovery, Regional Reclaimed Water System, Supply System Feasibility Study. And they go through the state resiliency funding application for the PR3 project, which is the reservoir, and the Phase Three-C Regional Interconnect Progressive Design Build Contractor Selection, and the Phase Two Regional Interconnect Progressive Design Build Contractor Selection, and the purchase of the Phase Three Regional Interconnect Pumping Station Site and Associated Easements, Initial Funding Program for the Phase Two-B and Three-C Regional Interconnect, the Master Water Supply Contract Cleanup, and the Peace River Reservoir Number Three and Associated Surface Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project Approval.
Very good.
Couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I'll get back to the budget at the end. So what I guess I found out at pre-agenda was that the Two-B project looks like it's been greenlighted by Swift Mud, because we're starting to get initial funding, and it doesn't necessarily mean you're guaranteed down the line. But if they start putting money into it, they're probably not going to stop and throw out the two or three or five million they put in. And so that's good news. The master water supply contract revisions, I requested from Mr. Coats. I said, you know, I know you've got staff meetings where everybody kind of, everybody's at the table from all of the counties, that's fine. But if there's individual language changes that are requested, rather than a redline document, I kind of want to know, like, green is Sarasota, and manatee is orange. And I want to know, like, who's wanting to change the language and where it's coming from. So I hope he can produce that for you, just because I think it's important to understand, you know, there's a redline change, but who requested it? Why is it there? It just helps. And then I also asked him about, and I don't know where it is in here, but I asked him about the aquifer storage, and maybe it's back to the budget. But, you know, it's like $22 million that we're spending on aquifer storage, because we've got to pretreat the water before it goes down and comes back. And, you know, we use it, but we don't use it that often. And I think, honestly, we use it because we want to make sure the pumps are working, and we've got it, so we need to use it, and kind of move the water around a little bit. But at the end of the day, I asked him, I said, well, if we have that other, you know, a nine-billion-gallon pond up there, and we've upsized all the intakes off the river, you know, is it really necessary? Why are we spending this money? And certainly, if the state, because I said, when are we going to get the go-ahead to just put untreated water down there? Because at the end of the day, we're spending so much money on chemicals, and chemicals are getting expensive. I think it's time to think about just forgetting about that ASR altogether. We may have matured to the point where we don't really need to have it, especially if we're moving in this other direction. $330 million to bring that reservoir up, you know, that 22 million's, it's some money. You know, I mean, I just, I thought that was worth discussing. And, you know, getting back to the budget, we actually, it went up, but it's because we received additional monies from the state. So, yeah, we actually wound up, even though the budget went from 76.4 million to 78.3, we, right, so we got about a $600,000 credit. So that was good news. But, yeah, I mean, I think that's, I want to hear from my fellow commissioner here.
Commissioner Doherty?
ASR, the real problem, and, you know, I'm concerned about it, too, as it relates to the storage north of Lake Okeechobee. You know, the South Florida Water Management District is proposing like 50, I think it's 55 wells, you know, five MGD each. I mean, it's something like that. It's, and it's, they're going to have to have a water plant for each one of these, you know. I mean, it's amazing. So the cost, the problem is EPA. That's the problem. It's in Washington. And I've mentioned this before, I think that changing, of course, changing the Clean Water Act is, you know, it's going to be tough. But that's the real problem, though. And I don't think it's DEP as much as it is EPA. So I think that, again, if we are capable or have the opportunity to visit back in DC sometime in the relatively near future, we do need to get that on our agenda, to try to find out the science. I need to understand the science better as to what specifically is EPA worried about? Is it bacteria? We can chlorinate this stuff, right? And put it down there. What is the real problem with the Clean Water Acts prohibiting what we're talking about? It makes no sense to me right now, but I don't understand the science well enough to draw a conclusion.
Right, and I think, if I can, Mr. Chairman, you know, I think that, that's fine. And if we find out in a few months, you know, it's sort of dead in the water, no pun intended. I think we need to rethink the strategy, because it's very, very expensive.
I don't disagree. I think utilization of ASR is going to be very carefully thought through. And like you say, more of an O&M type of reasons, maybe, to operate it, make sure it's still there for us as an emergency. But, yeah, we need to try to find the plan where we can certainly take it offline at some point down the road. I wouldn't recommend doing it for quite a while, until, obviously, until 2030, when we get Reservoir Three up and running.
I'm just starting the conversation.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Anything further? All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to comment on the consent agenda number 10, the changing the interlocal agreement. Sarasota County decided to follow our model on the interlocal for Three-B that we did for Two-B.
For Three-C?
Three-C, I'm sorry. The letters mixed up.
So they approved it, and then they went back and they said, well, wait a second.
That's what the amendment is now, is to go and do it the way we did it.
So I just save them $30 million? Or no, 25, I think.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that earlier.
All right, thank you. Very good, appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
We will.
Sarasota County owns Charlotte County, a big credit.
Yeah.
Really? Maybe they can pitch in on our portion.
Get Gordon to send out a credit memo.
All right, we're going to go to S one, a public hearing on our third quarter budget adjustments.
Good morning Commissioners, Rick Arthur, Fiscal Services. As you know, on a quarterly basis, Fiscal Services reviews the budget and makes any technical adjustments that are necessary. We bring those back to the board for approval, and of course, hold a public hearing if that's necessary. And so this public hearing is for our fiscal year '22 third quarter budget adjustments.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record, you'll have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak, public input. This is on the third quarter budget adjustments.
Thank you. Lynn Saipoo Vista Neighborhood, that's one block from the Charlotte Harbor Beach Complex. So I'd like to talk about the budget allocation for the engineering study for the Charlotte Harbor Beach Park.
That's not part of the adjustments, ma'am, so this will not be the appropriate time.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we'll bring you back up, though, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on the budget adjustments for third quarter? Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one rising, move to close public input.
Motion second to close, any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Chairman, move approval of the resolution.
Motion second to approve, discuss your questions. Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. Next, we go to our Charlotte County Sanitation Unit MSBU, first-time assessed public hearing.
Good morning Commissioners. This is our public hearing for first-time assessed. This is strictly for the sanitation unit. We have seven properties, and that comes up to 11 units. And we have included the partial IDs along with the resolution this time.
Very good. Are there any questions? Mr. Stacey, do you have anything to add? Okay, very good. Just want to make sure. All right, with that, then, we will open the public input portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the sanitation MSBU resolution may come forward, state your name for the record. And you'll have up to five minutes.
Do I print my name here?
Yeah, go ahead, write down, that'd be, that's fine. In case we have any questions about spelling.
No, I should be okay. Morning, my name is Peter, my last name is Mattson, I represent Outback Ranch on Berman Road, that is mentioned in this item. I see that, well, we had, we've been assessed for five units. There's only one permanent residence out there. The other units have been, the remaining four units have been used for recreational purposes whenever they're being used, and I think the utility bills can support that. We never intended to defraud anybody or do anything, we've just never been contacted by the county in regards to sanitation. I just, I'm not very happy with the way that the whole proceed has gone down. On October 22nd last year, I was working in a barn, and I heard a sound, I walked outside, and then there's a drone at eye level. And I got very upset, to say the least. And then I walked out and followed out to the road, and I crossed from the road from Boy Scout Camp, there was a two-trucks parked, and there were two individuals over there, went over there and talked to them, and they said that they couldn't tell me what they were doing. So they gave me a number, phone number, and a name of the person I could call, Mr. Lorenzo. And I called him, and I don't think I got much further with that. The part that I'm disturbed about is that we have a mail, there's a mailbox out there. We have a phone number. The property appraisers never had any problem getting in contact with us if they need some information. The same thing with the sheriff's office, fire department, state. And I don't have a problem paying, I mean, we'll pay for one unit, because that's the permanent residence. I just don't like the way that it went down, I feel like being spied on in some kind of totalitarian regime. I don't know if that's what Charlotte County is about, but I'd hope not. So to conclude everything, yes, there's one permanent residence out there. Nobody lives in the other ones. They're being used occasionally. And if anybody used them, it's always been the rule that they had to take the garbage with them, because, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one else rising, move to close public input portion.
Motion second to close, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. I guess as to process, I would have questions about that, that we need to research. I don't know that, I don't know that we have legal authority to put a drone on somebody's property, particularly at that level, I would find a bit of an issue with that. No, I wouldn't find it as a bit of an issue, I'd have an issue with it on my property, too. And so I hear what he says, and then I guess the question is, are there five residents out there?
I can't speak to this individual, you know, property. What I understand is that the property appraiser made a change to the land, to the code, and we match our MSBU database to what the property appraiser's database is.
Okay.
So that's.
Mr. Lys is behind you to help out.
For the record, Johnny Lys, Public Works Director. I don't know that I'm going to help out, I'm just going to agree with what Rick said. It was a process through the property appraiser's office that determines the ERU.
Thank you, Commissioner Seale?
Yeah, so I wanted to understand, you know, with the ERU and how it applies to, it sounds like there's multiple dwellings on the site. Is it unified ownership of one site, which has multiple buildings on it? Or are there individually-owned parcels that are getting charged an equivalent residential unit for the sanitation? That's what I'm.
It's one parcel ID.
Okay. So they should own, if you have one parcel ID, regardless of how many buildings you have on it, do you pay just one ERU?
I think it might be different, depending on the number of ERUs that gets classified. But again, we don't make that judgment, that's determined by the property appraiser. And whatever they say, we match our database up to, and then it's assessed, you know, based on the ERUs.
Well, we need to have, I need to have a definition of what equates to an equivalent residential unit. If it's unified ownership of one parcel, regardless of the amount of buildings on it, how does that work? I mean, if it wasn't that way in the past, but it got picked up this year, I mean, how did that happen?
Yeah, I'm just, again, I can't speak for the property appraiser and how they made that determination, but whatever they tell us, as far as the number, you know, residential units on a property, that's just what, then we assess that.
Well, I'd probably like to hear from the property appraiser's office to understand how this was done. how this was done. I mean, you know, because I'm not comfortable right now not knowing.
Well, and I have a proposal that may or may not be legal. But I'm going to, when you're finished, I'm going to go to Mr. Constance and I'll present.
And in terms of the drone, I believe there are regulations regarding use of drones. And I assume the county's following whatever regulations are in place. Is that correct? While I see John coming in.
There are regulations and we'll look at that and discuss it with staff.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not getting sloppy on the zone use, drone usage.
I wasn't going to speak to the drone. I was just going to reiterate, the property appraiser, I guess, has determined that there was five properties out there that could potentially generate stuff to create the ERU.
Okay. So it's in his opinion that it's an opinion-based decision? If he feels that there's multiple dwellings and he says, well, they could be generating trash, so therefore they have to pay an assessment?
I've literally never, I don't want to speak to something that I'm not actually sure how the process works. Whatever the property appraiser has historically done, that's to Rick's earlier point, that's how we line up our ERU account.
Okay. Well, in terms of the drone, maybe Hector, did you want to add to that?
Regarding the drone, we'll certainly look.
The usage of the drone.
Yeah, we'll certainly look, confirm. We have, you know, a drone program that we make sure we're, like Ms. Knowlton said, we'll review that.
Yeah, as long as we're working within the guidelines. I know it's a safe way for staff to do their job. And it's economical and efficient, you know, to use a drone in certain instances. I just want to make sure we're not abusing whatever authority we have to use them. Thank you.
Understood completely.
Thank you. Commissioner Constance is next, then Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I called this property up on the GIS and it's very slow to recalibrate here. But it looks like it's just one parcel. And it looks like there's just one dwelling. So I'm having a little bit of an issue trying to figure out how we went from one to five or how it's being rated as five. Yeah, this is not, it's not updating fast enough because this should all be shrinking here.
Commissioners, rather than second guessing what the property appraiser did, may I suggest, because by statute, the property appraiser is the one who gives us the information and we do the assessment. If we need to dig further and get the information so that we can confirm it for you and you're comfortable, I would suggest continuing this to the next board meeting.
So can we do?
Can we do that?
That's the question, though. It's September and I think you need this to get it on the rolls.
I'm looking at staff as far as time.
Can I ask this question? If we, if we were to move it today and got more information, we could walk it back in September. But if we don't move it today, then we have an issue pushing it forward? Is that, is that the situation?
I would probably need legal's opinion on that. I would assume you could do that just like you could lower a rate.
Well, my proposal, and this is why I said I don't know if it's legal, would be to go ahead and provide for one unit. So we can move forward with that one, research it and find out, you know, factually, are there really four more units? Or they have little lodges on there for like little guest houses? I don't know. But I think that that, that's how I would like to move forward. So we at least capture the one and then we can move forward with the investigation.
Mr. Chair, point of information?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we contact the property appraiser? He's only a couple floors away. We can come back to this later. Maybe he can get back to us. We can resolve it today.
And he may or may not be available.
Yeah, well, it's worth a shot.
Okay. Commissioner Constance, back to you, sir. Sorry, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I still would like to get guidance. Can we, can we move it without jeopardy and be able to walk it back? What are the timelines?
Well, we send out the trim notices in August. So this is kind of like our, you know, last chance to get this.
Right. But trim notices are sent out and people can then appeal them, can't they?
Well, yes, they could come back, I suppose, at the September public hearings. But at that point, the rates have already been approved.
So is this going to affect the rates of, because four, five versus one?
Well, it's not going to affect the rates, but it's going to affect how much they're assessed.
Correct.
Because of the ERUs.
Five times.
Yeah.
Well, it'll, it'll affect how much this property owner's assessed.
Yes.
But it's not going to, it's not going to affect everybody else.
No.
Right. But I'm saying, so if we determine, if we say five today and then we determine it should be one, we can adjust that.
Well, yeah. And I would assume that if the property adjuster or the property appraiser would make that determination, then we would also reflect that change in our database before the actual bills would be sent out later in the year.
So I don't think, I mean, because I, from what the evidence I'm seeing right now, I see one plat and one residence. So, you know, for me, I can see moving the item with five. But unless I get more information, I'm going to want it back on the agenda to reduce it to one unless we get better information.
Sure. And we can follow up with the property appraiser. Again, we don't, we don't make the determinations. And I wouldn't want to second guess him. I'm sure he has guidelines and, you know, statutes that he follows in making those determinations. But we can definitely provide more information and bring it back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes, that's, that's precisely what we used to do 40 years ago. I mean, if we had a situation like this, we had to get it on the roll. We had, had to be on the notices, had to get it out the door. If we had a problem, the first public hearing, we always, the board always had the authority to change the number of units or whatever the concern was. Ms. Knowlton, do you, do you agree with that?
I would suggest you go ahead and approve it as it is. We will get with the property appraiser during the break. And if we need to bring it back up to you for reconsideration for some reason by the end of the meeting, we can do that. We will have an answer for you.
Okay.
Shortly.
If we can do that.
Somebody in the property appraiser's office can answer this.
I'll move the resolution, sir.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I'm just going to make comment that I agree with Commissioner Constance. We need to, and I'm, I'm going to stay on the side of voting for this so I can call reconsideration if need be. But we do want to investigate this, sir. I want to make certain that everything is proper. And if you would also please provide your contact information to Emily Lewis, who's in the back row, I would greatly appreciate that because we're going to want to get in touch with you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition. It passes unanimously. Okay, next we're going to go to revisions to two dash four, Article Five, parking. Mr. Scott, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tommy Scott, Community Services Director. Yes, this public hearing will be to consider revisions to, as you mentioned, Chapter two dash four, Article Five, parking at county beaches and boat ramps specifically. I mean, there's some other cleanup changes, but mainly to address the vehicles that are parking in the elongated trailer parking spaces to make those four vehicles towing a trailer. Stand ready to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We will, we'll open it up for public input. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record. You'll have up to five minutes. This is on boat parking, trailer parking? Okay.
Lynn Sabo, Charlotte Harbor Beach Park. I live nearby. I strongly support it. There are a lot of people who park in there and take up those spaces. This will also be important when I talk to you about the design for the redo of that park. I support you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one else rising. Move to close public input portion.
Motion second to close. Is there opposition? Hearing no opposition. That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to let Commissioner Tissell read.
Move in ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Charlotte County, Florida, amending Chapter two dash four, Article Five of the Code of Laws and Ordinances of Charlotte County, Florida, governing parking at county beaches and boat ramps, boat ramp parks, providing for definitions, providing for permitted parking, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for ineffective data.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition. That passes unanimously. All right. Next we're going to go to our presentation on Bay Shore Parking Lot and Connector. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Your microphone seems to be off.
Good morning, Commissioners. Travis Purdue, Facilities Director, for the record. I'm bringing, we are bringing back to you for discussion, the Bay Shore Parking Lot and Connector design. Couple of quick slides. So as you can tell, we are following the model that was proposed in the concept plan, identifying the parking counts here, the shaded colors are grass and the new concrete, you know, colors and the asphalt pavement there. The scope of this or the intent of this design is to try to maintain or, and to maintain as much tree preservation, existing stormwater design as possible to keep with the accelerated schedule to meet by next February. This is just a quick overlay of GIS to, again, just show that this latest iteration of the design based on the current site conditions. So our proposed, the concept parking proposal that we showed you had 152 parking spaces with seven ADA parking spaces. The new, this new proposal pairs that down to 143 with six ADA parking spaces. Again, that's just part of realigning to do as much tree preservation and impact the stormwater as least as possible. So with that, I'll open it up to questions or comments.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tissell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the overlay. I'd ask that we add that because I, I know it was very important to the board that we have some tree preservation out there as much as possible. So I wanted to see what was existing and how the new parking lot looked. The spacing between the back of the parking spaces, is that a minimum of 24 feet from back to back? Yeah, that space in between? Yeah.
I will have to get that information.
Okay, because...
You'll have the full plan here.
Because I know sometimes engineering allow you to go a little narrower, but it gets real tight. I was almost thinking about like Publix does with all the new parking lots where they're all angled. You go one way, it's easy to get out and maneuver and you could have one lane as opposed to two, 24 feet, maybe you can go to 20 feet. It just makes it easier for flow. So everybody's flowing in one direction to get in and out of this thing. Because what it appears like to me now is, is when you back out of these spots, you can go one way or the other. And you're going to get a lot of cross traffic and people trying to back in and back out. I don't know. I just always liked the flow of those angled spots with the one directional. So you can, you know, people, it's just easier to back up too. But you lose, you lose spots that way.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't, yeah, I just don't know how many. But you certainly maximize the amount of spots here. And, and just for the, for the record, there were some statements made earlier that somehow Sunseeker asked me or to give them parking. I did not get a call from Sunseeker requesting that we put in taxpayer-funded parking for their resort. You know, when we had this discussion, we talked about adding the 1,000 feet or whatever it was of new boardwalk that we never had before and providing access to the public. But this was not driven for me by a request from Sunseeker, some type of condition of a permit or some type of favor to somebody. This, to me, was a common sense project based on what we anticipate when this facility opens, which will be, elements of it will be open to the public, including the boardwalk and the restaurants and possibly other elements. They're going to have a, an event center in there. I think it was 40,000 to 60,000 square feet. So it's just going to, you know, there's a whole host of things, you know, why I wanted to move ahead with this. The other is, is that this is stabilized turf. It's not impervious area. It was like an eco-friendly parking lot. And I look at it as warehousing the land for the public for some future need. If in the event we don't need all these parking, it's grass essentially. So you put in elements that the community may need down the road. And we already had two parking pods on this particular piece. They were small, but one on each end kind of bookend, bookended it. So in reality, this really served as a parking lot in the first place. We've just made it more, added more spaces, especially the ones up against Sunseeker's wall. I guess it was discovered later. There was a dispute over who actually owned that property. And after we did, I guess, more of a title search or legal description, we actually, that was county property. So all those things that abut Sunseeker along their wall there, that's also additional parking there. That wasn't a park. It was a drainage, I think drainage and some other elements there. But yeah, I appreciate the overlay and, you know, the, the ability to preserve some of those trees. And it looks like you're adding more landscaping, I believe, as a, to, to bookend some of those parking lots that's required by code.
We hope to. We're, we're at 30%. We get through site plans review and through those, you know, whatever's required, we'll definitely be able to define that better as we move forward through.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Constance?
Thanks, sir. What were the numbers again before you executed this design?
The conceptual plan that we brought before you were at 152 spaces with seven ADA. That's including seven ADA handicap spaces.
Okay, so 152 with seven, and now it's 143 with six? Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I do really appreciate the design, including the existing pads and trying to minimize the need for stormwater. I know I brought that up and I'm really glad that, that you incorporated because I think we did much better in that way. And it still preserves sort of a parking park concept. I'm assuming the, the orange is the walkway. So that's how we're going to integrate to the boardwalk by walking diagonally up the barrier wall and, and that's how people are going to access the walkway?
Yeah. So the orange illustrates concrete, but you're, you're correct. It is the sidewalk that would give people the ability to traverse down to that connection, that connection. I do want to say that we are working through comments, both with Sunseeker folks, internal reviews. And this is 30%. There, there may be some, some adjustments in the 60% plans that you'll see when we come back to you with it that may affect that circulation, that foot traffic circulation.
And, and I'm assuming we're taking into account a maximum ADA grade so that you're going to have to have a very long run to get from the ground up to the deck. So it's going to take a fair amount of that length to keep it at a low grade for people to be able to get up that ramp. Is that correct?
Of course, this plan illustrates stepping and ADA ramping to the connection point as, as shown here. An option that we are looking at as we develop these plans further is that longer grade, you know, that, that panning out further to bring that elevation up and not need the steps or the, the specific ADA ramping to the platform that, that would ultimately be needed to meet that elevation at the Sunseeker entrance.
Right. I mean, I, again, I think, yeah, I see what you're saying at the, at the waterside portion.
So that's here. There's stairs here. There's a ramp here. There's a ramp, you know, here on this side and stairs here as well.
Is that going to be long enough? Because that seems like a pretty high height to get up to that.
It, by code, it is long enough on this plan.
Is it because you're going to be traversing back and forth or?
Some of the elevation in, in the adjacencies will have to be increased. I think it's a three, a 3.3 grade existing to a 5.8 grade. So it's a little over two feet.
Is that all? Okay.
The grade, the grade elevation's not extreme, but this plan...
That's easier then.
Should cover that.
Because I thought, I thought it was going to be a lot longer and you were going to have to do a longer stretch and try to incorporate some, you know, the minimum grade and then some flat and then a minimum grade and some flat. So there could be some resting. But I guess if you can accomplish it in a shorter distance, that's fine.
But just to, to reiterate, we are looking at that more gradual approach as an option or an alternate.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's important that we deal with some facts here because someday we'll be able to have a mechanism that the rumors in the county will be fact-checked before they get spread around. But, you know, pretty much ever since we made the improvements to Bay Shore Park with the playground equipment and the restrooms and the pavilions, which was about 11 years ago, because when Chris and I came on the board, we were required to put in restroom facilities that were not, were sort of given a break to prior commissions. And I can remember $350,000 for a couple Johns seemed like an awful lot to me, but I was new on the board. Subsequent to that, because the park was very popular, the county went ahead and purchased some lots nearby to help provide adequate parking for people to have access to the park. Not just to the children, but I've been to weddings there... Not just for the children, but I've been to weddings there, I've been to a number of other activities that take place along the park area, and it's well-used. In addition to that, working in cooperation of being very creative between the county attorney and some ideas that we had regarding cleaning up the park and making it, quote, alcohol-free, also enhanced the utilization of the park and let it move into a place that wasn't so attractive to some of our homeless population. So there's been a lot of things that have happened to that area. And one of the things that, and this is where we deal with some fact and fiction with Sunseeker. You know, I'm really getting frustrated by hearing all that we gave Sunseeker. We haven't given Sunseeker anything. We've worked cooperatively with them, we've challenged them on occasion, we've supported them on occasion, but we've made sure that they deal with all existing county codes and regulations. That's what we've done. What we did benefit from Sunseeker, and it's important that people know and understand this, is public access and accessibility to the waterfront and properties that were private. A number of them were privately owned. There was a restaurant there, there was the miniature golf course there, which was probably the highest point in Charlotte County next to the landfill, and I miss it, you know, and we had the marina down there. All of that was private. And part of our arrangement of opening up the boardwalk with Sunseeker is that that's all open and accessible to the public. Put that aside, those are facts. On the other side, Sunseeker was required to make their case to this board to come up with the required number of parking places they needed on their site to run their facility. And they convinced us, and the zoning regs and our parking regs and all that, based on their model and what was happening in the staff and their employees, they have enough onsite parking to handle their facility with the model the way it is now. So we're looking at parking. Sunseeker never requested additional parking that I'm aware of here, and I think Commissioner Teseo noted that. I haven't had any contacts with them regarding this. We're coming up with the additional parking place to benefit the residents of our community to give them accessibility to that boardwalk and that park area. Now, I do have a couple of questions on that, and I'm going to wolf into this. I think we need more handicap spaces. And I heard some comment made by a stand-up comic who was talking about coming and visiting to Florida, and he was talking about handicap spaces. Sheesh, they don't need any handicap spaces in Florida. Everybody's old in handicaps, you know? I'm not sure that's really true, but it's rare, it's rare that I find empty handicap parking places anywhere. And if we're looking at a park area, I think it's important we have additional handicap spaces, and I would request that you take another look at that. Also, and when we get into elevation, that boardwalk area has to be handicap accessible. Handicap accessible, when we're talking about elevations, and I've been working with some of these regs since the 70s, and sometimes they're frustrating and sometimes they're challenging, but, and you and Bill know this, it's what, one foot for one inch? Isn't that, Joe, pretty much?
One and 20 without a rail.
Okay, but, you know, generally speaking, for every, for every inch you go up, you need a foot.
And you have to have a rail with that, one and 12.
Exactly. And, and we have to do that, because we want people to be safe, but we also want the facility to be accessible. So, you know, I could go, you know, if we're going to put in 100 parking, 100 parking places, I'd love to see 20, 25, 20 of them at least handicap accessible. I think it will work for us. But I think it's important that this is something we're looking at, and we're not doing, we're doing for the people that live in the county. So they'll be able to get to that boardwalk, that they'll be able to get to the water, that they'll be able to get down to the restaurants, and actually, they'll be able to get to the other side of 41 without having to cross that road. Depending on the tide and weather, they're going to be able to go under 41 and, and end up, what's it, Whiskey Joe is eventually, and the beach on the other side. That's a big plus for the county. It's a benefit. It's accessibility. It's a plus for our citizens. I think it's something that we have to look at, but I'm going to, once again, mention the handicap spots. I'd love to see it come up. And, you know, worst comes to worst, if there's one or two extra, somebody's going to probably sneak in there anyhow, but I think we need them. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Overall, in general, the plan looks good to me. I got some, obviously, the 60% drawings. I'd love to see the grading plan that goes along with, you know, all this, because I can't really, it was difficult, as Commissioner Constance was trying to relate to the vertical differential between Sunseeker and our, our access points, but it does appear to me that it's only probably a little over two-foot differential based on just looking at the ramp slash stairs combination going different directions. So I think, I think it's, it's going to work out really, really well. The legend doesn't call out for any elimination of the wheel stops. Are the wheel stops going to be installed, or, you know? I see heads nodding, no?
Yes, yes.
There will be wheel stops. Just an O and M issue, that's all. You know, when you get a grass parking lot, it's going to be fun for some weed-whacking guy to get out there and try to keep that under control. I'm just bringing it up, you know, how, that has to factor in and everything. Generally speaking, I've done, I've literally, I can't even tell you how many grass parking lots I've done across the United States and sports facilities. And they show flow lines in here for the drainage. I really would highly recommend that the designer consider some subsurface drainage in those, in those areas, because no matter what happens, you need to be able to get that residual water out of there. They get the, the flow lines they'll put in and everything else will work great, but it'll, it'll be soggy. It'll be a soggy parking lot, difficult for the pedestrians if there's not a way to, to get rid of that, that residual water that will take a long time, because it just doesn't flow that fast, you know, it doesn't go away. Other than that, looks good.
Well, Commissioner Doherty, there was a parking lot that I fought for over in West County, and it was grass, and we weren't looking to count it as parking because it wasn't solid surface. And so, you know, I brought up back then how important it was for us to get away from solid surface and go to more of these stabilized grass parking systems, and the one over there worked very well. In a downpour, I walked out, went to my truck, I didn't have to walk through water. So however they did theirs was, worked very well. I don't know, but I know it can be done.
And I agree. It just depends on the soils below, below the turf, and we might be fortunate that there might be great infiltration rates right here where we happen to be sitting, so that, I'll just bring it up as a, as a design concern with whoever's doing the actual design at DMK, just to take a look at that.
Absolutely.
Happy to bring those details back at our next...
Yes, at the 60%.
So do we need to give any direction on this, just to continue? Is that...
Sir, just for discussion and just make...
All right. Very good. Go ahead.
Well, Commissioner Deutsch brought up the handicap spaces. I don't know if one commissioner can have you redesign for handicap. So, I mean, I'm giving it some thought, and I'm looking here. So you've got two on the very western side, but that kind of services, you've got the bathrooms there and then the rest of the park, and you have to have the spots closest to where you're trying to access. So you've got one, two, is that four or five total?
Six.
There's six total, but there's four on the right-hand side or the east side of the parking lot.
Right. It seemed, does seem kind of light right near that ramp to the boardwalk to have, to have that. I wouldn't be opposed to looking at a, at an alternative plan with, you know, you have the, the bank of parking spaces there in that pod. If you can get the, yeah, that bank somewhere in there, maybe, you know, maybe a couple more spots.
You could lose one right there on the right-hand side on solid surface area, put your, put two handicaps in a, in a access point, walkway there, but you, but the other ones, because they're on grass, can't be, they're not ADA.
Well, then, yeah, then maybe we can do something there, or even if we have to add a little extra pavement to one area to, to get access, because, you know...
You affect your stormwater.
Yes.
You can't put pave, you can't...
The goal here is to try to minimize the time it takes to go through swift mud to maintain...
Well, then, maybe those three paved spots, maybe turn them into two more handicap, because I, I do agree, our community does have a lot of people who, you know, need to be ADA compliant, and, and this is a, we're going to ask a lot of people to come to this area.
And I have no issue with that either. So there's at least three of us. Oh, I don't think you're going to get the objection from anybody. But if, do we think we need to add any more near the restrooms on the other end? Because that's, you've got more asphalt or solid parking there that we could add more if we thought necessary? I, I don't know. I don't know in our parks, and Tommy, maybe you can address this, in, you know, the number of spots that we would maybe effectively need for this area. And I know it's, it's two things. It's, it's, it's not just Sunseeker, it's park access and boardwalk.
Mr. Chair, if I can, you know, I, I think you could go with the plan the way it is, knowing that you can restripe.
Right.
You know, you can always take back more, because we're only going to do it on those two asphalt pads that we've, we've, you know, going to resurrect and keep in here. So I think have community services keep a very close watch on utilization, and then if there's an issue, absolutely start restriping and add as many more that we need.
And I like that, because it's easy to block it out and redo it.
Yeah, simple, and, and we'll have real-world experience to do it, so I think it's a good idea.
And I just, I took some notes here, so I was trying to remember what some of the citizens said earlier about this, and I believe there was a statement about Sunseeker using it for their facility as overflow parking or something to that effect. So my understanding, when we talked about this, is that Sunseeker said they are not going to have their employees park on this lot. How we monitor that, I'm not sure, but they did make a statement saying they were going to have onsite parking for their people. I see Jeanette coming to the mic. Do you remember that?
I do remember that, and it's my understanding he's going to have a written employee policy.
Okay.
So you all could request that at some point.
Okay, well, we'll be, I'm putting in my request now. And as far as overnight parking, so let's say there's a guest who doesn't want to pay the resort fee, and they want to park here maybe for free, I would say we can post no overnight parking signs.
That's in every park now.
Okay.
Tommy can speak to the order.
It's in every park now. Who would want to park there when they could have secure parking at the resort?
Right. Well, you know, sometimes people want to save 20 bucks or whatever, they're going to charge 30 bucks. You get some cheapies out there like myself, looking for something.
Risk the windshield.
But, yeah, so in terms of overnight parking, you know, we're going to have a policy, so, you know, guests won't be parking there and flooding it. So, and I also wanted to make the comment, I believe, and maybe someone from staff here can refresh my memory, Sunseeker has in their Phase Two a space for a parking garage. I don't know if anybody, I seem to remember that, and I see Sean coming up to the mic. I just want to confirm that.
Sean Cullen playing zoning official. That is correct. They do have that in future phases. I don't remember if it's specifically in Phase Two. Currently, Phase Two is more their pool with some pool cabanas. They're breaking the phases down a little bit more, but they do have a standalone park garage, and they are actually currently constructing the, the integrated parking garage as, right now. We were out on site yesterday on an inspection and a tour, and they're, they're on about floor three of the parking decks.
So would it be safe to say that Sunseeker has provisions for future parking needs with the ability to build a parking garage, which is on their site plan?
Yes, sir. Everything that was shown was reviewed by the engineers, county engineering staff, they're professional engineers, taking into account other resorts of this type and the model that is being proposed where people are flown in, bussed in, met all the criteria. Staff, professional engineers, way smarter than me, they have reviewed it, they were in agreement with that, and staff, where our opinion is that it meets all the standards and requirements of the code and comp plan.
Yeah, and I guess as a technicality, I think the, the difference people are making is that, well, what if this changes hands and the model changes in terms of they're not bussed in or flown in? Will the parking test still hold?
When a, when a building changes uses, we have what's called the CNC, commercial name change, they would go through that process. We would evaluate the new uses for adequate parking, just like other uses, and the code allows for parking studies. It may be something that has a different model as well, but they would, they have those provisions as well to do an independent parking analysis.
Okay, so the county would get a second bite at the apple in terms of parking should ownership change?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's float that out there. In terms of the funding for this, we were talking about funding this through TIF financing. So when Sunseeker gets built, they're essentially paying through the increased tax collections for this improvement. Now, one could make the argument, well, if they weren't doing this, that money would be going to the general fund. That argument could be made. But technically, if Sunseeker wasn't building or doing this project here, there wouldn't be any TIF funding. So in a way, you know, you can say that Sunseeker in the end is, is paying for this improvement, including the other improvements that were mentioned for the roadways and the intersection improvements up the road, which are, were necessitated essentially by new growth in Charlotte County, like all the other infrastructure improvements we're doing for roadways here. It's just they're in the pecking order somewhere. We identify issues and we do intersection improvements all the time. We just had a corridor study this morning for veterans. That wasn't because of Sunseeker. So I just want to try to get as much factual information out there. And for the record, I have not met with a Sunseeker representative in probably two years. I've not spoken to Mr. Redmond, I've not spoken to any of their representatives for anything. You can check my calendar. This is all stuff that is organic through the planning process for future growth, not through backdoor private meetings with developers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We have a executive session at noon, gentlemen. And so with that, we'll go into recess, we'll have our executive session at 12 o'clock, and then we'll be back for 1:00, public input on any subject with plan used to follow. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We are now at the afternoon session of our Board of County Commissioners meeting for July 26, 2022. Let the record reflect, all commissioners are back. And with this point, we go to public input on any county-related subject. Anyone wishing to address the board during this portion of the meeting must state their name for the record. Remarks on county-related subjects are limited to three minutes max and shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to individual members. There is no discussion at this time. With that, I open it up. Whoever would like to come forward first, please step up to the mic.
So, good afternoon. Going to try this again. Lynn Sapo, Buena Vista neighborhood, one block from the Charlotte Harbor Beach complex. So this topic is about the Charlotte Harbor Beach Park and the project that has been partially funded through the one-cent sales tax. First of all, this is a two-phase project, but the engineering design, as far as I understand it, has not been asked for two distinct engineering designs. So you need to ask for two separate engineering designs, one for Phase One funded only. The second one should be able to be either approved or denied based on funding. That second part is about the pool, okay? So the first part, the buildings, if you have any influence on the design, please recognize that the triangular shape of the roofs on those buildings are used as navigational aids by all the boaters as they come in from the harbor into Alligator Bay. And the engineers didn't know this. I'm an engineer, I was a project manager, I talked to the air project manager, he had no idea. So I asked him, but I hope it isn't forgotten. Secondly, you may not want to fund Phase Two. This is a pool replacement. The new regs would state that the pool would have to be moved back much farther, taking up a huge area of the parking lot. It would also be redundant to two other lap pools within just a few miles of the area. This is a fairly small piece of land that you're talking about, and it's well-used, and there's a lot of people and different uses for it. talking about, and it's well-used, and there's a lot of people and different uses for it. If you put a large lap-type pool there, reduce the parking, and have these much, double the size of the buildings that they're planning on having, there isn't going to be enough space for parking. There, it's going to remove the only pool in the whole county that's actually on the harbor. Also, last year, you invested in a new pool heater, a pool deck, huge umbrellas, converted the pool to saltwater, redid the parking lot, redid the lighting system, redid the landscaping. It's lovely. Thank you. They have had no structural or erosion problems if they, so please consider, don't fund the pool. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name's David Thompson. I'm a resident of Charlotte County. My wife and I have been residents for the past seven years. We own Waterfront Canal Home. We enjoy fishing, sailing, and other boating around Charlotte Harbor. I am concerned with recent reports of the increase in dying seagrass, losing manatees, crabs, game fish, making fishing becoming more difficult in Charlotte Harbor. Plus, there's more recent increase in algae growth in the canals. The majority of Charlotte Harbor shorelines, as you know, are land preserves, wildlife preserves, parks. Yet more of the wildlife seems to have been dying off in past years due to numerous studies. Much of this is due to contamination of the waters in the Peace River and Charlotte Harbor. From another perspective, a large resort is coming soon, as you well know. A big part of that resort's broadcast of its promotional and marketing is going to be, it's boasting of the nature and the waterfront activities, which is going to bring a lot of revenue to the county. This ought to motivate the county to make sure we bring our fish and natural water foul to a strong and good, healthy status again. A big source of the contaminated water, it's been documented, is coming from upstream mining in DeSoto County, because they're contaminating waters which flows down in the water tables through the Peace River, ending up in Charlotte Harbor. What I'd like to see is that Charlotte County pushes DeSoto County and perhaps the state of Florida more to protect our residents and our residents' lifestyles, to stop allowing further phosphate mining up in the county, in DeSoto County. A company known as Mosaic Mining, hopefully you're aware of, is busy mining phosphates that get sold over to China for the most part. So they're mining phosphates, they sell them for the most part to China, the profits go to Mosaic, and the waste piles go into DeSoto County. They get dumped upstream. The toxic waste chemicals from those streams get leaked into our water tables and water streams, mainly going into a lot of the Peace River water table. I would like to see that we put more effort to protect the residents here, the property, the wildlife, and the lifestyles that we all enjoy. Recent evidence shows that this may be even getting worse. In 2019, there were actual measurements of radioactive waters that were found in the tap water of a DeSoto County school. It was due to radon, and the radon was churned up from phosphate mining. The phosphate contaminated minings are finding their way into our county.
I'm sorry, sir. Your time has expired, but we appreciate the comments. And there's another gentleman that's going to come up.
Very good.
I'm sure he appreciates those comments as well.
Okay, thank you. You got my printout. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon, sir.
Everybody in the chamber. Tomorrow is going to be the DeSoto Mosaic Phosphate Mining Workshop. And it's going to be about wildlife. And that's why, when I saw the ad in the paper the other day, now, Mosaic has never made it once to this chamber. They were supposed to. I have personally requested CEO Jaco Rourke from Mosaic to be at this chamber. I've requested COB Gary Ebel to come to this chamber, especially when I found out Gary Ebel spent almost $1 million in Mosaic common stock about two months ago. Now, our river is severely impaired, and that is a fact. And the mining that is happening up in Hardy County, and then above that in Polk County, and all of the discharges that keep coming out from the outfalls to the Peace River are definitely the cause. We have Manatee County polluting the Maiaqua River from the mines in Manatee. That's a fact, commissioners. You know, I once said that you should sue Manatee, Polk, Hardy, City of Bartow. We really should. I had a great conversation with the president of CNEP. I was on the telephone with her for over an hour. She called me back. And I want to tell you, she said some things to me about the NPDES permit that I've been in this chamber for four years discussing, and the administrative hearing process, and they are severely flawed. I've asked all of you to write letters to our Charlotte County Legislative Delegation about this NPDES permit. And you know, Senator Ben Albert brought something to my attention the day he tried to ostracize me in November of 2021 at our meeting. He brought up total daily loads. That's a good, good, you had me thinking, Ben. That's what we need to get put on the river, a number. You know, Mosaic's discharging up to 27 million. I filed that lawsuit when they were doing 2.6 million. They modified that NPDES permit. We really need help to stop this. It is going to be Charlotte County that turns this whole thing around. Phosphate mining needs to come to an end in Florida. I mean, done. Our rivers need to heal. Commissioners, thank you as always.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How you doing today?
Good afternoon.
You're having a great summer. All right. As you know, Rob Kurzal from the Tringley Hockey League. It's been incredible so far. Been out there playing. Thank you for that. It's, like I said, it is truly great being back out there again. But the one thing that I mentioned to you from the very beginning was the ceiling. And actually, I went back through some of our old things and actually some of your files, and seeing it was supposed to just be grounded out, but then checked on periodically. Well, here we are, seven months into being, or being grounded, and the thing's falling apart pretty quick. Just from two weeks ago, I got, this is only part of it, that much off the rink. Then a week later, got that much off the rink. And it gets brushed off, you know, prior to that because we played several times throughout the week. So that's just in a week's time, that much is coming off the rink, just from what I'm doing. It's not counting what's coming off when it rains, and rain pushes it off. And like I say, we do use it several times. And I'm not the only one that also uses it. There's other people that use it as well. I had tried to go up the chain of command, which they've said I needed to do. So about three or four months ago, I went to the U-Sports Council meeting and mentioned it to them. They said they're going to have someone check into it. They said they had someone check into it. And to this day, I still haven't heard anything back yet. I talked to Dave and Lonnie, who do the U-Sports. They said they took, actually Lonnie went down there, looked at it. He took his concerns to his higher-ups, and he still hasn't heard anything back. To Tommy, I tried to stop in and see Tommy a couple of times. Unfortunately, he's a very busy guy. So I wasn't able to meet up with him. I actually stopped in there again last week to find out he was on vacation. I did leave a message for him Friday, hoping to hear from him yesterday. So that way, I talked to him before I came here. So I don't know if Tommy knows anything about this, but I was requested to go through the chain of command before I go to even here. So I guess my problem is, where do we go from here? There's cracks forming, there's pits forming. And the thing that I was talking about from the very beginning is, if we don't do it right the first time, we're going to be back in the same spot we were. And it's getting close to that. Getting ready to get another storm out there again today. You know, the water gets on it, gets inside, gets heats up, spans, blows stuff out of the cement. So it should have been sealed somehow, at least with something. So I guess my question is, I would love to find out what's going on with the rink. I have no idea. Nobody's gotten back to me. Like I said, I've been waiting for basically three and a half months, four months from the U-Sports Council meeting. It goes through, I don't know who they go through, but eventually it's got to go through, you know, the parks and recs. So if you could find that out, I'd greatly appreciate it. If someone could reach out to me, I would greatly appreciate it. But again, all the kids and everyone out there that's enjoying, like I said, thank you very much. It's, we're still using it. It's still going to be good for several months yet, but I want to get it before we're at the point where it's beyond repair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you.
Commissioners, staff, Richard Russell, Port Charlotte. I spoke this morning in regards to Sunseeker, and I think there's maybe some issues about clarity there. My concerns are parking, obviously. And if they're charging for parking, that will most likely drive some people off the property to the closest parking. And that comes into Bay Shore Live Oak Park. And my thought is, if they do that, and there's a flow of traffic because of that, why shouldn't the county charge parking on that segment that's being added to offset the cost? That's one thing. With regard to Port Charlotte Beach Complex, I still feel like that what we've got there is quite adequate. To do anything larger is going to do two things. And one is to impact the parking, and possibly on a big event or something, going to drive people into the neighborhood to park. And harbor is a narrow two-lane road there, and all our residential streets are narrow two-lane streets. It's going to impact our community. And what parking is there is not going to be increased for more than doubling the building. And I don't know what the calculations are with the parking ratio relative to the structures and the improvements there, and how the actual parking ratio per Charlotte County Code stacks up to that. I mean, you can't put a square peg in a round hole. You do, that hole is going to get obliterated. And that's what's going to happen to that park and our neighborhood there. So that's another thing. And with that, I'll leave you with a minute left. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
So we are to talk now about your plot, vacation.
That is under, that's under public hearing, UB4, so you can speak to it on the record at that point, if you'd like. You also have the right to speak twice. Okay. All right, very good. Anyone else then? I'll just ask one more time. You don't, I don't think you need to. You're good. You can if you want, but you don't have to. So, thank you. All right. With that, then, folks, we're going to go to comments. Mr. Flores.
Just one, we will certainly get the full background on the Tringley Hockey Rink and get the board an update ASAP.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Olden?
Two things. One, we closed today on the Richard Lake Parcels A and C, the vacant properties. We will close on the residential waterfront property on or before June 28th of 2023. Also, I wanted to follow up with you on the MSBU, sanitation MSBU. I sent you pictures of the property. The property appraiser's webpage lists the five cottages in one barn. Under the definition of our code, it's section 4-4-16 for equivalent residential unit, says it's intended or capable of being used for residential living. Based on the pictures and the fact that the property appraiser and our permits show that there's plumbing in every facility, I do believe that constitutes an ERU. And also, they were assessed for five units for fire rescue back in 2021. I don't believe the individual that showed today was the property owner. I think he said he represents the property owner. But if they dispute the categorization, they really should take it up with the property appraiser. So that's all I have.
Okay. And one of the things I noticed from the pictures you sent, those were from 2018. Are we just, why are we waiting to address it when, I mean, it's four years old almost, do you know?
I do not know that.
Again, that's property appraisers thing. All right. I was also informed, if I haven't verified this, that there's individual, each one has its own power meter. Yeah, so that's one of the things that we'd have to take into consideration as well. So the evidence in, it seems to be overwhelming that they are five. That, sir, I don't know without going through the health department. So with that, I'll go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Deutsch. Commissioner Teseo.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to update the board. The legislature passed and the governor signed into law the ability for local governments to have a smoking ban on beaches. And I know it was the desire of the board to head in that direction. I just want to know if I can get an update from the county attorney.
Yes, we could do it even now through our facility rules, but we're going to bring forth an ordinance for you in September.
Okay.
That gives us more teeth for enforcement, correct?
Yes.
Next, I want to address citizens' comment on pools at the beach complex. My understanding, if I remember right, and Tommy's not here, I believe when we looked at the master parks program and the needs study in regards to amenities at our facilities, that the pool was well-used, highly used in that area, and that that element was going to remain, and we were going to expand on what was there because the usage of the pool was so great. In terms of lap pools close by, I'm trying to think, the only one we would have would be in North County and Westport and South County. So this is kind of a mid-county lap pool. So there's nothing that's like a mile away from that area. I think it's centrally located at a midpoint, so people don't have to travel too far if they want to do some lap swimming. I don't have a problem getting with staff at my next one-on-ones just to confirm the needs in regards to the master park plan for that pool at that facility. But that was discussed, and I remember we workedshopped that or talked about it multiple times through a bunch of different meetings, to come up with the elements at that park. In terms of what the county is doing for water quality and phosphate mining, I just want to, I just jotted down a couple of quick notes, because, you know, as we sit here and sometimes get input from folks out there, you would think we weren't doing anything. So I just want to give a quick list here of what we've done. We banned phosphate mining in Charlotte County. We created new enforcement codes to regulate aggregate mining that does exist in Charlotte County. We hired a water quality manager specifically to look at water quality in Charlotte County and even impacts of things outside the county that would impact our water quality inside the county. The board has adopted and carried out our Blue Water Strategy, septic to sewer conversion, sewer expansion, to remove nitrogen and other things from our water. We're pushing now for an advanced wastewater treatment to further treat our wastewater in Charlotte County. We're undergoing pipe replacement and pipe lining. Every time we have an infrastructure project, we look at the age of the pipes, and we go through a program to restore those pipes in good, quality, working condition. In addition to that, we're constantly undergoing drainage improvements. When we do new projects, we make sure we're meeting all stormwater requirements. So any impacts from stormwater, from any infrastructure improvements, is properly treated before it makes it to the harbor to the extent that the permits require us to do so. I guess I can go on. That was just what I jotted down in just a few minutes as I sit here and listen to citizen input. citizen input. This board is well-aware how important water quality is to the quality of life here in Charlotte County for our residents. Water quality, when we do our, our citizen surveys, continually ranks at the top of the list, along with law enforcement and public safety. And that's how we come up with our strategies. So we go out to the community, we look at where the community is on these issues, and then we create policies. And, and the Blue Water Policy was born out of those discussions and talking to the citizens of Charlotte County, because what is important to you is important to us. I think what we haven't done yet is taken an official board position on the decision that DeSoto County is going to do in regards to phosphate mining. At a recent Florida Association of County meetings, I had a discussion with a DeSoto County Commissioner Schaefer. I wasn't speaking on behalf of the board, I was speaking on behalf of myself in how concerned we are downstream to what's going on in DeSoto County. She clearly understood that that's a concern for us here in Charlotte County, and it's definitely on her list of things to think about as they navigate through those workshops and when they, when it does come time to make a decision on the rezoning. Now, when the time comes, if the board's going to take an official action or a motion on a position on whether or not we think, even though it's in the jurisdiction of DeSoto County, nothing prohibits this board from taking an official position on whether they should deny or approve phosphate mining in DeSoto County. I don't think we've gotten there yet. I've done a lot of investigation on phosphate mining in DeSoto County. I'm sorry, in, in the existing operations in Polk County and, and other places. But, you know, as we get closer to that, I probably will want to ask my colleagues at some point to take a position, an official position by way of motion, on, on how we feel about phosphate mining in DeSoto County. But we're engaged, don't think that we're not. Things may not be happening in the manner that you would like, but it doesn't mean it's not on our minds and we're not working on it behind the scenes. So I just wanted to get that out there, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
I would also add, our recent joint meeting with the city of Northport, that they are not just aware, but we're having discussions on what they send to us. So they're aware that we're concerned, they're concerned, and so now you've got a micro-region working together, as it will all end up to the harbor. So I just wanted to point that out as well. And you're good?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Mr. Flores. You had something, sir?
Yes, thank you. I did have one thing. I wanted Mr. Gleason to just show a new page that we have up on our website called My Neighborhood. I think I've mentioned it individually, it was still in beta testing, but thank you for allowing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector. For the record, Brian Gleason, Communications Manager. Yeah, we just released this on Monday. This is a new webpage feature called My Neighborhood, and it's pretty straightforward. You enter in your address, whether it's residential or commercial, and it'll give you the property information, your elected officials, voting precincts, polling locations, evacuation zones, county services and facilities, schools, garbage pickup schedules, flood zones, and that sort of information. So it's got a lot of great response right out of the gate from our staff. He'll give you an example here. This is a residential property. It gives you the overview with the GIS map, the year built, assessed property information. And then if you click on the property appraiser details, that auto-fills the property appraisers' information, so you don't have to enter in your address over again, and it gives you all that detail that's on the property appraiser's site, which also links to the tax collector's site. So a wealth of information there. Just scrolling down, government information, where you vote, your representatives in the Senate, House, US Senate, US House, services, as I mentioned, garbage and recycling schedules, who you get your water and your sewer services from, what school your home, the school that serves your home address. In this case, in my house, it's Kingsway and Port Charlotte and Charlotte High School. That changes all the time, and this will be updated as those boundaries change. And then again, flood zone information, your evacuation zone, property information. So this is going to be a really useful tool. I know Dave Gammon, when we were describing it to him with economic development, said he's going to be sharing it with his development friends and realtor friends. And so we're looking forward to a lot of good feedback on this. And if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. For the general public, just go to our website, wwwcharlott county FL.gov, and there's a My Neighborhood link at the top of the page, and then just be ready to type in your address, type in your neighbor's address, type in whoever's address you want. Type in Commissioner Deutsch's address right now if you want. But, yeah, so great job by the staff on this. Just for your information, we value-engineered this project out of the original scope of services for the website redesign to save about $40,000 or $50,000. Two years in, we've got the expertise on the content management system and the, on the GIS side, and we were able to do it in-house in about three months. So I just want to thank my staff, Elaine Jones and Vitalik Zagulin, and staff from the Geographic Information Systems Office, Raju Gopinath, Matthew Desjardins, and Wyatt Hoffman. Great work by them, they saved us and the taxpayers about $50,000.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Teseo.
Yeah, this is excellent, excellent. Can you scroll up just a little bit? No, no, down, I'm sorry, down, down, stop. So this is supposed to have the most updated information on it?
It will have the most updated information as soon as we update it.
Okay, because, because that picture, Commissioner Doherty, that...
Ancient.
That, that's like back to 2010. Like, we need to update that.
2012.
Yeah, I mean, 2012, I'm sorry.
I won't sprinkle it.
You have to chase them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Deutsch.
I think it's a great idea. I have a, it's been a pet peeve of mine a long time and a concern. People get confused by the commission districts. Even this election, I've already had a half a dozen phone calls on which commissioner do I get to vote for? And, you know, frankly, the only purpose of a district number is where a commissioner has to come from and live. So we don't get five commissioners that are in Inglewood, or five in Murdoch, or five in Punta Gorda. That's the only purpose it serves. I think it's important that the folks in the community know that they don't just get to call one person, whoever that person is, that they have access to all five of us. And each one of us represents all of Charlotte County. If you're going to do that, list, show all five commissioners, and then put something like, he's the one that's got to live in your neighborhood. But I think it's, it's a confusing issue, Brian, and I don't know an easy way to do it, but, and every, I don't know, I assume you guys run into it, because I've had, ever since I've been here, that people don't get, who's my commissioner? I said, well, you have five, you get to pick one. And, you know, if you want the tall one, the short one, the chubby one, the old one, the happy one, you can pick any commissioner you want, or all five of us. But I think, in fact, frankly, I'd love to see us drop our district numbers when we list our names, because we all represent the whole county. All that district represents is where we have to live, and it confuses people. And I, and I'll tell you, there's a definite percentage of this county, and I won't guess at the number, that think they only get one commissioner. So I don't know how to address that. You know, it's been an issue I've been aware of for a long time, but I think that just makes them think they only have one commissioner.
Yep. Two things kept me up last night. One was that you were going to say that, and the other one was pronouncing Raju's last name. So, yeah, we are, we're going to add in the link to the county commission page that lists all the commissioners, and we can do some more messaging on the fact that all the commissioners represent all the county. I do think there is some value for residents that they have someone that is from their district, and I'm sure you get a lot of calls from people that are in your district who feel like you're their guy, so...
Half the people that spoke today are my neighbors. But, but I, but I think it's important that they know if they can't get hold of me, or they don't like what I have to say, or whatever, that they can call Joe, or Bill, or, you know, or Chris, or Kenny, they can, you know, or all of us. And I think all five pictures could be here, and if you want to put, he's the one that has to live in your neighborhood, that's great.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. You did think I'd bring it up, huh?
I knew you were going to bring it up.
See, the Red Sox win one game, and you're off and running. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. Commissioner Constance.
I think the website additions are excellent. Totally agree. Yeah, I mean, you know, I just, I guess, since we're talking about the current election situation, I got to make this comment because I'm just really saddened and disappointed to see that we have corruption creeping into the, the process. So, you know, having outside forces coming into Charlotte County and trying to move votes is just a very sad thing. And we won't see each other until September, so everybody drive safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I will plan on getting that photograph updated, sir. I think my wife calls it my obituary picture, you know? You've seen those in the paper, some folks that pass away, they're 80 or 90 years old, and it's their high school graduation picture, you know? That's where I'm going. Anyways... I'm not going there, sir. I, I do appreciate all the people that do volunteer for our various committees. I, you know, the chairman brought that up today, I guess, as we usually do at our meetings, beginning our meetings. We have a lot of vacancies in a lot of our committees. And I have observed over all the years, being a resident here in Charlotte County, being pretty actively involved with our local government, that people that get involved with some of these committees gain additional information that helps them understand where we are by plugging in, spending the time, investing some time on some of these committees, whatever it is, MSBU Advisory Committee, I've got two vacancies in Park and Recreation and Beaches and Shores. So anybody, I'm just advertising that right now, anybody that would like to volunteer for the District 1 seats there, please contact me, because we do, I do need to get those filled. But there's a lot, there's quite a selection of committees that have vacancies. So I just encourage everybody that, who's, has time available to, to consider it strongly. And again, as Commissioner Constance says, we're not meeting again till September. Have a safe break, everybody, and if you're traveling, again, safe travels.
Thank you. Thank you. To your last comments there on, on openings, as soon as we, we did approve a CILB member that we needed desperately.
Yes.
And as soon as that, as soon as we put, put that out, we received three more applications, one of them being Aaron Mull and Travis, who I'd love to see on that board. So we are definitely, in my office, we're collecting those and keeping those, so that if we get another opening, that we, you know, reach out to those folks, which is how we found this last person, they didn't realize it was back open again, so...
Mr. Rand, who was approved this morning?
Yes.
He lives in Deep Creek.
Yeah.
So I made a phone call and encouraged him to consider Beaches and Shores and/or Parks and Rec, too. So that was great.
That's good. Very good. I've got a couple of things, but really, it's related to NACO, phenomenal conference. It went very, very well. It was at a good facility that kind of kept everybody together, quite frankly, because it was out basically in the middle of nowhere. You know, it wasn't too far from the airport, maybe 15 minutes, but it was a little bit of a ways from Denver, and the Florida group did a couple of things together, which was nice. We also were recipients of, I think it was 21 awards, Mr. Flores. And in one case, we were actually invited up on stage to accept the certificate for the award, which is the first time that I've been to a, a NACO conference, and the awards were received, that we've been able to participate at that level. So that was really, really good. The election process went very smooth for the second vice president, and it was overwhelmingly gentleman that we, that Commissioner Constance brought up, James Gore, got about 71% of the vote. And so he did his work, and he, he really reached a lot of folks, and I think he'll be a great leader. Our past president, Larry Johnson, I went up and spoke to him personally because I, I just thought he had done a phenomenal job this past year. He really was good at interacting with people, and quite frankly, Florida didn't go with him, not once, but twice. And he was very cordial to Florida, even though that happened. So I wanted to make sure that I, I, you know, respected him and showed him, you know, how gracious we are, that he was, who he was, just a good person. So again, the, the committee meetings were very good. I ended up chairing Immigration again this time, and a lot of meetings, but it went very, very well, so I just wanted you to all know that. And then again, with the break coming up, just everybody have, you know, safe times, and if you're traveling anywhere, safe travels, and just have a, a good August. And with that, we, yes, sir?
Yeah, just real quick, so while we may not be meeting, Commissioner Truex and I have an assignment for the canvassing board.
Yes.
I think I've got at least seven assignments to do over the next, you know, couple of weeks, so it's my first time on the canvassing board. I'm looking forward to it. Went to all the training that was required.
Got your handwriting analysis?
Yeah, I did, I had to take, I had to take the handwriting course and all the other courses to...
I'm about halfway through that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I finished it up, so I guess I'll see you out there somewhere at some point.
Yeah, we have the testing...
Yeah.
On Thursday morning, right? So I'll be, I'll see you there.
Yeah.
Other than that, we're going to go into recess until 2:00. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to the land use portion of our meeting today. Our first items up or under consent agenda. Under consent agenda? Excuse me, I'll start all over again. You're back for the land use portion of the meeting, and this is on the, this first portion is on the consent agenda item, items. We'll open it up for public input on any of the first four consent agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak on one of these four may come forward. State your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on any consent agenda items? John, yours is on UB4. It's going to be the next set. It's, yeah, it's, it's individually, just to confirm. I'm watching out for you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone wishing to speak on consent agenda items only? Okay, John? We will move forward. And gentlemen, anybody have anything to pull in general, just ask?
UA 3 and UA 4.
Okay, UA 3 and UA 4. I'll entertain a motion on balance.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? Hearing all, hearing none? Any opposed to the motion? Hearing no opposition to the motion. UA 1 and UA 2 pass at a block. We have a quasi-judicial on UA 3, so if we could ask the clerk to stand up. Anybody giving testimony today, please rise and raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please say I do.
Thank you all very much. And with that, we will go to UA 3 for presentation. Mr. Cullen?
Disclosures.
Yes, Commissioner Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I had my monthly staff briefing with Community Development, the Attorney's Office, and I filed my paperwork this morning.
Commissioner Constance?
Nothing to disclose.
Thank you, Commissioner Teseo.
Nothing to disclose.
I have nothing to disclose. And Commissioner Deutsch, UA 3, quasi-judicial?
Yep, filed my paperwork.
Okay, and, very good.
I met with staff.
Met with staff, okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Mr. Cullen?
Thank you, Sean Cullen, Planning Zoning Official. I have been sworn. The two items that have been pulled from consent, they're tied in, they're on the same property. TDU 2204 is a request from OB4 for the property currently known as Coral Creek. This is to transfer 600 density units onto the properties located at 12, 300, and 13,000 Burnt Store Road in the Punta Gorda area. Here is the high aerial, you can see it down here in Burnt Store, mid-range. Neighborhood framework is emerging neighborhood, therefore qualifying it as a receiving zone. And future land use map designation, Burnt Store Village Residential, with a zoning designation of planned development. This is the coastal high hazard area map. As you can see, a portion of this is within the Category 1 storm surge. The TDUs being transferred into that area would match that proper storm surge and flood map elevations. With that, I can either do both of them at the same time, or, okay. Then the next item, same owner, but this is by DR Horton. They are also looking to transfer, excuse me, transfer 98 density units. These, I believe, are density units that they own, which is the reason for the simultaneous. DR Horton owns 98 units, and other developers and other, TDU holders own the other ones. The property and everything is the same, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well. This meets all the... This meets all the standards of the comp plan and the land development regulations.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner DeSaille?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, I pulled these two items out of an abundance of transparency. There's been a lot of concern over the Burnt Store corridor, and I wanted to make sure that something as significant as these particular land use items get pulled and discussed to understand the density that's being transferred into the area. If I remember right, Sean, was this the property that had the RE1 for a portion of it and then other commercial rights for another portion? And I think there was a wetland that traversed through part of it, and they were gonna bridge that?
No, sir. That one is over off of Zimmel Road. That is Eagle Preserve, I believe it's called. That goes up off of Zimmel Road, and there's a little bit of tying in on Burnt Store, but that is not this one. This one, or these two, I should say, I apologize. Once Burnt Store was widened, I'm trying to get to a good aerial of this, these areas here were taken for ponds, storage. And so this had a, it had a time extension for the planned development. There were a number of actions that had been taken previously within the past six to eight months, roughly, maybe past year. And this is just transferring the actual density. All of the other approvals needed to get to this point to transfer onto the density have been approved by you folks.
Yeah, and there was one of these that I did not approve. I think the vote was not unanimous, and I'm thinking it was this one. I was looking for a full staff report on the attachment, but it was more of a staff memo.
Correct. That is, again, with the TDU transfer, where you're transferring density on, it's a very ministerial, if it meets the requirements of the code, because in order to get to this point, you already have had to approve the future land use map amendments, if necessary, the PD rezonings, whatever other steps in order to transfer the density on. That has been the process, and these have been the staff memos for these TDUs for longer than I've been around here. So I apologize if there's more information you need, we'd be happy to get that to you, but this has been following the same SOPs as it has from the beginning.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, with that, we'll go to the applicants, representative, for a presentation.
Good afternoon, Jerry Waxler with McCory Law Firm. I have been sworn. I'm representing the applicant on number three, not on number four, which was done by the most recent purchaser of the property. I can tell you that we came before this board a year ago. This property was originally zoned for 999 units in 2008. With the widening of Burnt Store Road and the taking, there was some uncertainty about what they could and could not develop. Ultimately, the PD expired. We came back to you a year ago this month, so July of 2021, to ask basically that we resurrect this PD. You did extend the PD indefinitely and granted again the 999 units. Commissioner DeSaille, I don't recall, I truly don't recall what the vote was on that. They have since, you also at that time approved a minor modification to reflect some adjustments to the site plan that resulted from the taking, because obviously, it can be exactly the same site plan. We did go through that process with Sean, and the minor modification was granted and has been granted, and they are now ready to start moving forward with preliminary plat and those sorts of things. But when you submit for preliminary plat, you must have your density on the site, so they hear before you to simply transfer the density to the site in conformance with the density that was, it's actually less density than what was approved under the PD rezoning. And we would request that you approve this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Very good. With that, then, we will open up public input on this item. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Tim Ritchie. Another 900 units, and this is off of Burnt Store Road? It's getting pretty crowded down there. I don't know how we go about changing what these lands were plotted with, but I can tell you, at this point in Charlotte County, I would have to say a 50% reduction would be a very wise thing. I mean, how many have we already approved this year? And some of these aren't gonna be built for another year, or two, or three, or 10. We have a lot of traffic here on 41, just in the communities alone. The New York section traffic is really bad. The traffic in PGI is really bad. And we're just gonna continue and continue to approve all of this development. Now, gets back to in two years, so 10 years from now, are we gonna have enough drinking water for everybody? Even with getting the reservoir, being able to provide us 2 million gallons extra a day? Our community has drastically changed in the last two or three years. And when I was coming over the bridge today, and I'm thinking about a lot of things I hear about Sunseeker and the traffic, and what I experienced personally in traffic, and it's gonna funnel down into Punta Gorda with just those two lanes. And the city of Punta Gorda has already experienced a huge amount of growth. In my neighborhood, I think there's maybe two lots left. In four years, there have probably been over, I would say, $25 million, $30 million in building in my neighborhood. And these aren't little houses these guys are building. These are 4,000, 5,000 square foot structures. All I'm gonna say over and over and over, when I come up here to speak on these issues, is I don't know how, but the number of units must come down. We don't wanna see, the majority of people I talk to don't wanna see more and more development in Charlotte County. A lot of people I've been talking to lately are very upset with the idea that Punta Gorda Airport's gonna be turned into Miami Airport. It takes away the charm, and it leaves an impact, a footprint on our county that's not good. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hope that you guys don't do anything. I hope you tell them no, 'cause that's probably would be the best thing for Charlotte County and all the citizens, is to slow all this development up. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, Richard Russell, Port Charlotte. My career was spent dealing with finding sites that were appropriate. If they weren't appropriate, we went in and dealt with the commissions, zoning folks, to get the property zoned appropriately. Sometimes we had to do a lot of negotiations. But one of the things that, to Tim's comment, people have vested rights, they have a value. The only way you're gonna reduce that is to go back to the people that own the properties and get them to settle for dollars to give up their property rights. And I don't know, I've heard it said, who knows how many of these lots are owned by an individual or a corporation? In other words, how many of these lots are sitting out there that are really on the tax rolls as part of Charlotte County property? I don't know that. I don't know if you all know that, or anybody knows that. But that's something to look into. If you've got something like this, and you've got 900 platted lots, how many people own those lots? There might be a trade-off. There may only be 500 of them that are actually owned by individuals or corporations. And you rework it, instead of building 900 homes, you build 500. I mean, there's gotta be a solution to the point that if every one of these lots gets built, it's gonna be atrocious. But my question to the commission is, are these lots all owned individually, and are they being paid taxes on them? I mean, is there something we can do in that regard? Because I understand if somebody has a zoned lot, they can build on it and do whatever they want within those criteria. But if they're not owned, maybe we can work something out on some of these areas. Maybe not here, but in other areas, where this will be coming down the pike in another year, two, five, or 10 years. Get ahead of the curve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I see no one rising. Ms. Waxler for rebuttal?
Jerry Waxler again, just a very brief rebuttal. I just, you all know this, but for the benefit of those in the audience and those watching on TV, this is a transfer of density units. What people sometimes don't understand is that, that density units, transfer density units ordinance was put into place, basically caps density in the county. When you approve a transfer of density and allow development, you are not allowing any more density units in Charlotte County than what we had back in 1999, which is when I think the TDU ordinance went into effect. You are simply moving density from a less appropriate place to develop to a more appropriate place to develop. And I think sometimes people don't understand that when we're talking about a transfer of density units, that we are not increasing density, we are not increasing the number of units that could be developed in Charlotte County. We are just developing them in places that are more appropriate than where that density came from. And so I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Waxler, this part, or these two parcels, they've already been approved for these density units to be able to move the units there. So of all the ones that we've accounted for down on Burnt Store Road, these are already in that count?
Correct. And this was approved in 2008, right after the Burnt Store Plan was put in. So it was one of the first properties that came in and rezoned pursuant to that Burnt Store Plan, which, again, you know this, for the benefit of the folks who are in the audience watching don't know, that Burnt Store Plan looked at traffic, it looked at drainage, it looked at water supply, it looked at the total number of units that we were proposing to develop, it looked at environmental issues. And we worked with every property owner's association along Burnt Store Road. They came in in support. We did not have anybody speak against this Burnt Store Plan that created the potential for these increased development along this road. That has also gotten lost in some of the discussions about Burnt Store, and so I just wanted you all to be aware of that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSaille, did you have anything further? I didn't clear you, I don't think, but...
Yeah, to that point, the Burnt Store Village Residential and zoning designation for planned development was done, looks like, back in 2007. And it had a combination of residential and commercial units with a maximum density of 999 units and 200,000 square feet of commercial. Then there was, subsequently, there were expirations and then renewals of those approvals, and that's where we are today. But I don't disagree with you. We have a bucket of density in Charlotte County, we're just moving it around. It's not an infinite number, it's a finite number. So there's only so much density here, and then there's no more. So while there's density being asked to be transferred into this project today, these units now are taken from someplace where they can't put those units. So we're directing density to places in the county that's more appropriate than other places in the county. So that's just the way, a little bit of background. The reason I pulled the items is because there has been a lot of concern about people thinking that we're approving these densities and these projects in certain corridors, and we're not paying attention to what's going on. And I wanted to pull these, like I said earlier, out of transparency, so people understand we're having this conversation, we understand what's going on in Charlotte County when it comes to density in these projects. So I think this is consistent with, you know, the planned development and the Burnt Store Village Residential zoning and planned development for that area. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Deutsch?
Do you want to speak now or after the public portion, whatever?
Public portion's over, sir.
Oh, I thought, okay, I didn't know.
Well, she gets rebuttal after.
Okay, I'm gonna share a few things. There was a time where I spent a lot of time talking about the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. In fact, in this county, I've lectured to over 3,000 people on it. One of the unique things that sets us apart from the rest of the world is we can own property here in these great United States of America. The original Declaration of Independence stated, "And the pursuit of property." It was changed to happiness after it was signed. It sort of sets us off, sort of makes us unique. So the fact that we can own property, and Rousseau would have been upset of this, but we can stand there in the sand and take a stick and say, "This is mine." You can't do that in a lot of the world. That's one thing. General Development had a lot of property here. They had one job to do, and they were good at it. They sold lots. And they were real good at it, because we still have over 100,000 buildable lots, Tim. What we've tried to do, this body, at least for the time that Chris and I have been here, we've worked real hard to look down the road, probably unlike any other commission in the state of Florida. We've looked down the road, and we continue to look ahead. Right now, and there is traffic on Burnt Store Road, that road is designed to handle all these lots if they were built out, believe it or not. That's fact. A statement of fact, I can remember living in a house and having a vacant lot across the street, most of the neighborhood was built up, this was up in New England, and someone came in and built a house there. I wasn't happy with that house, because I liked looking at the vacant lot. But they owned that property, and they had a constitutional right of development of their personal property. But what we've done, we've looked down the road. I'm gonna address a couple of things you've said, and I wanna touch base on them, because they're important. With the plans we're doing, if everything got built out at the pace we are, we've already today know we're gonna have enough water for 50, 60 years down the road. We already know, and we had a workshop on it recently, our landfill is what, good for at least another 100 years? And we plan ahead on our roads. We plan ahead, and the new interchange that's gonna be coming off of the interstate, what we're gonna be doing by extending Edgewater Drive to 776 and widening that and softening the curb and trying to get some of the traffic off of 41. And what we're doing with Harborview Road, and Chris has worked real hard to get that, but that's what we try to do. We try to look ahead, we try to plan ahead, because people do have some right to self-determination on their property. And guess what? We're not just doing it with that level of infrastructure, we're doing it with fire stations, we're doing it with substations for the sheriff's office, because that's part of the challenge that we have, not to find ourselves in a crisis, but to put this community in a position that we can deal with the future as it comes across. And I don't wanna go on and on, but I think it's important that that's part of the responsibility we have as commissioners here. And it would be easy for me to say, gee, you know, I liked looking at that vacant lot across the street, I really didn't want the guy to put his house up. But that's part of what makes us so great. We can own that property, we can build that house. We used to be a secret. We're not a secret anymore. I didn't buy some waterfront lots I could have bought in 1968, because I didn't have the 500 bucks then, but, you know, we're not a secret anymore. But the whole world's dealing with this, too. So I think what we try and do, and with your help we can do this, is have reasonable development, let people utilize their constitutional rights, their property, but do it in a way that we can deal with it as it happens. I'm sorry, but I just, it's sort of been here a while. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Motion second to close of the opposition? Hearing none?
Chair, a quick question. So one is to transfer 600, the other is to transfer 98. How much is vested in the property currently?
Uh, let me check. 33 units.
Okay, so it's 600 plus 98 plus 30.
Thirty-three.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else? Gentlemen?
Chairman, move approval of UA3?
Second.
Motion second to approve UA3. Is there any opposition to the motion or discussion first, if need be? Hearing no discussion, is there opposition? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. Now, UA4 was part of the presentation, but Ms. Dalton, do I need to open that, open as well for public input? So I'll open that one up as well, UA4. So I'll open that one up as well, UA 4. Anyone wishing to speak on UA 4 may come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Mr. Chair, I see no one rising. Move to close public input.
Second.
Motion to second to close, opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that passes.
Chairman, move approval of UA 4.
Second.
Motion to second, do we have discussion or questions? Hearing none, do we have opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition to the motion, it passes unanimously. All right, that dispenses with our consent agenda. Now we will go to UB 1, Tucker's Point Phase 1. Mr. Cullman?
Thank you, sir. Disclosures.
Well, geez, yes. Commissioner Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I had my monthly staff briefing with Community Development, the Attorney's Office, and filed my paperwork this morning.
Commissioner Constance?
Nothing to disclose, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSao?
Nothing to disclose.
And Commissioner Deutsch?
Briefing and paperwork.
I have nothing to disclose. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Sean Cullen, Planning and Zoning Official, I have been sworn. This is a preliminary plat for Tucker's Developers LLC. This is for a 354-lot residential subdivision to be named Tucker's Point Phase 1. This is approximately 505 acres, and it's located sandwiched between 75 and 41 to the north of Tucker's Grade. As some of the other items we've spoken about, this has many numerous previous approvals. Here's the high aerial, mid-range, and the aerial location map. This portion is the commercial, it is not included in this petition, this is the outline. Here is the 1,000-foot buffer adjacent property owner notification map. Future land use map designations on the overall property have some commercial, some preservation, and some low-density residential. But again, in the subject of today's petition, it is just preservation and low-density residential with a planned development zoning classification. Here are the proposed changes, and those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. With that, staff finds it meets all the standards and requirements of the code, PD, and the land development regulations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is present as well.
Yes, sir. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Okay. Mr. Baracco, I see you in the audience, are you speaking today, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Carl Baracco Jr. with the Barackon Associates. The applicant does agree with staff's recommendation of approval, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, just one, so that both of those red commercial ones are not part of this, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, with that said, anyone wishing to speak on this, well, open up the public input portion of the meeting, just to be clear, anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, Jerry Waxler, McCurry Law Firm, representing, used to be Tucker's Point 1, the owners of the commercial property, I think they just reconvened it to a different name. Just wanted, we have no objection to this plat, the preluny plat, but just wanted to make you aware that under separate agreements, those commercial properties have the right to both drain into lakes that will be created within this plat, as well as to access that major spine road. That is not currently reflected in the dedication language on the plat, that will be changed, we're already in discussions, there is no animosity between the parties, but I just wanted to make you aware that when the final plat comes, it will make provision for those things. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much for the additional information. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Tim Ritchie again. So here we have more units, and there's going to be more runoff when we have rain. Where does that runoff go? Goes into the Peace River, goes into our Gulf. You know, I love America, Commissioner Deutsch. We do live in the greatest place in the whole world, and I don't take our rights for granted When I think about my rights, I think about my grandfather, Lieutenant Commander David Cleo Ritchie, who is resting in Column K in Arlington National Cemetery, along with my And each one of us, as private citizens, have a very unique gift that's granted to us when we're born in our country. But I'm still going to say this over and over and over, we might have 100,000 more units left, as Mr. Russell mentioned earlier. Do we know who owns all these properties? Maybe Charlotte County should start a fund, a trust, and start buying or offering all these people to buy their properties before they're developed. And then take each one of those properties and turn it into an environmental safe zone, and for it to never, ever be built on, ever. Turn it into a park for the children. Our county, I'll tell you, it's hard to believe that if we developed every single lot, that the roads and all the infrastructure could handle it. In some of the studies that happened maybe in the '70s and the '80s, or even for that matter, the '90s, maybe those consultants were wrong in their forecasting. Maybe their arithmetic was off. Maybe they weren't as good in actuary as they could have been. But our Peace River and our Charlotte Harbor are definitely seeing an impact from all of the development, not just the phosphate mining. And yes, I'm sure the septics have a big, cause a major problem. But maybe the secret is out, unfortunately. But again, there has to be a way that we can work together and figure out a way, and I'm thinking probably the best way is to buy any of these 100,000 lots out there. And we don't need to be realtors or in the real estate business, we're going to be in the conservating Charlotte County. We're going to actually act like conservatives, with a capital R, and we're going to conserve our beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one else rising. Move to close public input.
Second.
Motion to second to close, opposition to the motion? Hearing none, that passes. Commissioner Deutsch?
Beg your indulgence. Tim, we should be doing this in my backyard over a glass of wine, but, you know, we're on the same page with water quality, but I want to share something that a lot of folks here may not know. We will never be 100% built out, because 1/3 plus a minus of the property in Charlotte County can never be built on, because it's either environmentally sensitive land that the county or the state is protecting, or it's scrub Jay land, but 1/3 of the county will never be built on. And that's a pretty darn good high percentage, and a lot of people aren't aware of it. And you can see it if you go along Flamingo, you can see it if you're out in South Gulf Cove, and you look at all that property on the other side of the lagoon, that will never be built on. And about 1/3 of it, and that's a plus that a lot of us aren't aware of, and if you look at the parks and the open space and what we have, again, we keep looking down the road for the future and doing that. So to some degree, we've already done that, and we're continuing to do it, and we were questioned about the fact that we're trying to get some property in Placeta. And, you know, we're looking forward to it, because it's unique, it's special, it'll be for kayakers. We keep doing that, to whatever ability that we can. So, and I mention this because I don't think a lot of folks know that, but it's stuff that we should share. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of UB 1.
Second.
Motion to second to approve, discussion or questions? Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. Next we go to PP 220206, disclosures. Commissioner Doherty?
Same thing, sir. I had my monthly staff briefing with the Community Development Attorney's Office and filed my paperwork this morning.
Commissioner Constance?
Nothing to disclose, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner DeSao?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Deutsch?
Staff meeting, filed the paperwork.
I have nothing to disclose. Mr. Cullman?
Thank you, sir. Sean Cullen, Planning and Zoning Official, I have been sworn. This is a preliminary plat request from Babcock Ranch Community Independent School District. This is for a subdivision to be named Babcock Ranch Community Neighborhood School, containing 20 tracts for infrastructure and future development on approximately 67 acres, obviously within the Babcock Ranch community. Here is the high aerial, mid-range map, and the aerial location map, the 1,000-foot buffer notification map, future land use map designation is Babcock Mixed Use, and the zoning designation is Babcock Overlay Zoning District. The proposed changes, and those proposed changes overlaid onto an aerial. Please note that even Google Earth is not showing this yet, but this is a lake tract. There is already a lake constructed in there. As I've stated before, when Babcock does their infrastructure, they then come afterwards so that they make sure that the physical infrastructure is actually in the right places versus what has been done with some developments in the past where they've then had to modify. This meets all the standards and requirements of the comp plan, the development orders for Babcock, as well as the land development regs, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present as well.
Very good. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Burnson, good afternoon.
Rob Burnson, Big W Law, here on behalf of the applicant. I have been sworn in, we join in the staff report, and the findings contained therein. As I say every time I'm up here on a Babcock project, we continue to have a great working relationship with the staff, some real positive things happening out there, and this is just more of that development moving in the same direction. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we will open up the public input portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one rising. Move to close public input.
Second.
Motion to second to close, is there opposition? Hearing none, that passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Doherty?
Move approval of UB 2.
Motion to second to approve, is it discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a question for staff. You mentioned that this parcel, was it always part of the plan out in Babcock to develop this, or was this particular piece next to the school and that lake that's under construction, was it supposed to be something else, like green space?
No, sir, this is consistent with all the plans that have been approved moving forward. As you know, they do make modifications periodically, but this has always been part of all the previous approvals that you've done.
Was this part of the school campus at one time? Because I'm seeing letter of authorization in here signed by Babcock regarding the school.
That's required of every petition.
And did you want to speak further to that, Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, so there was a lot of confusion early on, because it's called the Babcock Neighborhood School Plat. That's just a name, it could have been called the XYZ Plat. It's, the school is within this, but that doesn't mean this is all school property or intended as school property. At the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think through some emails, there was a neighbor that was concerned that the lake was going to become part of the school. No, the lake is dedicated, per the plat language, to the public lakes in the ISD. So there was, it's just the name, I think, that caused a lot of confusion, that this was all going to be school. It's not all going to be school, it just happens to be where the school is.
So this was not supposed to be for future school expansion, it just happens to be in a school district or zone, whatever you want to call it.
The school itself is within this plat, so that's why they named the plat with the school, but the name of the plat has nothing to do with the intended development of the plat. The lakes are there as part of the overall drainage design for the project, there are other tracts for future development. This is not just school property, all to be developed as a school.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So, just looking at the map, where are the parks going to be? Where are the parks envisioned? I know we've got a lot of open water, and we've got the Market Square and other things, but way back when, years ago, I guess I envisioned more parks, because this is supposed to be a walking, it's turned into a golf cart, you know, location. I mean, I was out there the other day, and two young ladies in a golf cart almost took me out, because they were like buzzing around that roundabout. So it's, those things move fast, and they're silent, so that's the scary part. But I just, I felt like, I know there's a lot of water features, which is great, but I thought there was going to be more just open space for people to walk, possibly bike, maybe even ride horses, I don't know. I just, there was more of a Babcock Ranch, more of that vision, and actually, as we're infilling, I'm realizing, boy, it's just, it's just platted lots.
Again, just the scope of the overall project, it's hard to envision this, but basically there's the Curry Preserve Trail that's running down basically between Increment 1 and Increment 2, and that's, that all is going to be preserved, parkland. If you look at the map H in the DRI, you see a lot more of the open space and stuff. What you see when you're looking at the plats are like this small area that's being developed, but there's still many, many acres of open space, plat, preserve, all of that per the original DRI plan.
Quite a few trails in there, too.
Yep.
Right, there's miles and miles of trails over in this area. These are preserved wetlands, over here, there's walking trails around here and around these lakes. This plat, I believe, based on our discussions, there are intended to be some sports fields over in this general area as well.
And there is a park in the northern part of where this plat is, Jack Peoples Park is up there. It's not in the plat, but just, oops.
Yeah, I think it's a little further up.
No, no, it's right there, right above the school where the, you can, right there. That's Jack Peoples Park, where there's tennis courts and, I think, pickleball and different things.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I believe this Curry Creek Trail that he was talking about, the differentiator between, I believe that's about five miles of passive walking trail, linear park area.
Is that also intended to be like a wildlife corridor for the northern part, which is definitely all, you know, preserve land, and then if there's anything to the south, I don't know, but theoretically it's all intertwined.
We don't have signage directing them, so.
No way you find any signs.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. We have done the public input, we've had questions?
I did a motion.
Not to approve, we closed.
Move approval of UB 2.
Second.
Motion to second to approve, UB 2, is there discussion or questions further? Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition to the motion, UB 2 is approved. Next we have Lake Emily, PP-22-03-07 quasi-judicial. Commissioner Doherty?
Yes, sir, same thing. Had my monthly staff briefing with the Community Development Attorney's Office and filed my paperwork this morning.
Commissioner Constance?
Nothing to disclose, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSao?
Nothing to disclose.
Thank you. Commissioner Deutsch?
Had my meeting, did the paperwork.
Very good, I have nothing to disclose. Just for the public's information, we have to do this on every single item, we can't do it as a block, so that's why we do it every time, and I forget, because of too many years the other way. Mr. Cullman?
Thank you, sir. Sean Cullen, Planning and Zoning Official. This is a preliminary plat request from Lennar Homes LLC. This is for a residential subdivision to include 171 lots and seven tracts to be named Lake Emily. This is located adjacent to Winchester Boulevard, between Winchester and San Casa Boulevard. Here's the Google Earth image, it's a former mining operation, currently they're finalizing that as well as contouring the lake. This is the full range, as you can see in West County, this is Island Lake Estates, also recently purchased by Lennar. Here is the mid-range aerial and the aerial location map. This is the 1,000-foot buffer notification map, future land use map designation of low-density residential with a zoning designation of residential estate 1. These are the proposed changes, and those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. Staff finds that this meets all the standards and requirements of the code and comprehensive plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present as well.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Burnson?
Rob Burnson, Big W Law, I have been sworn, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. You know, you're getting old when you've been working on the same piece of property over 30 years. I have been working on this property since Jimmy Philman owned it many, many years ago, worked on it with Mr. Kokamore, who's owned it in the interim, and now working on it with Lennar Homes. Happy to say that this one looks like it's really going to happen this time, and although several of them did before, I think this is coming to fruition. So it's an old excavation, back when you could have excavations in the urban service area, that was done in the '80s and '90s. It was intended by Mr. Philman to be much like the Casa de Meadows, which is immediately to the west there, digging the lake, getting fill. We just kept digging the lake and digging the lake and digging the lake, so the lake got bigger and bigger, but we are... But we are joining in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Very good. I'm very familiar with this property, because my parents' house was in that lower right-hand corner to the right side of that angled, those two angled lots. They lived right adjacent to that. So I'm very familiar with that piece of property, and this is going to clean that up, and it's going to look nice, I think, when it's, when it's developed, so.
They were probably at the hearing for the incinerator in 1990.
Yeah, I was on there at Lenni, picking up ashes, so yes, I remember all that stuff. You're exactly right. All right. Any questions? Yes, sir.
So, does this platte mean they're going to dig out the edges of the lake to complete that, to make it clean on the edges, and then?
Shape it.
Yep. Contour it and shape it.
Right. So everybody's going to have like a waterfront, lakeside?
Well, not everyone, but.
But, I mean, the ones that are on, on the lake. So those will look like all single-family plots, maybe quarter acre. What do you think's going to be in all the other smaller ones?
It's just different product that Lennar has, attached product, different.
Right. They're usually paired villas, in a lot of cases, where they're, I call it condos, but they're individual.
I don't know all the details of that, but the way this is laid out, it's for their product, and specific product goes on a specific lot.
Got you. And then the rim at the top is nothing more than just a 10-foot.
Adjacent to the.
10-foot buffer, so, yeah. Yeah, okay, it's industrial. You're right. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burnson. We'll open up the public input portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward and state your name for the record, please. You'll have up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one rising. Move to close public input portion.
Motion to the second, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of UB3.
Second?
Second.
All right. And with that, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition to the motion, it passes unanimously. Now we go to UB4. This is KB Harvey Central Edition, Charlotte Harbor and Hickory Bluff. This is legislative item. And with that, we will go forward. Mr. Cullen?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a platte vacation request from Pastor Doyle Developers. This is for a platte vacation for lots 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, out of Block 5 and Lot 7, 8 of Block 9. In the KB Harvey Central Edition to Charlotte Harbor and Hickory Bluff, I believe this was an 1882 platte. This was recorded in Platte Book 1, page 17. And as you all know, anything in Platte Book 1 and those low pages is very old. The property to be vacated contains approximately 51,000 square feet. We know this from a lot of history as the Gentis property in Charlotte Harbor. Here is the high aerial, mid-range aerial, and the close-in aerial. As you can see, there's a creek that runs down through it, and you can see there's just a number of little lots remaining in there to be vacated. This has had, as you can see, a number of street vacations and other platte vacations over the years. Once again, the location map, the 1,000-foot buffer notification map. The future land use map designation is Charlotte Harbor Coastal Residential, and the zoning designation is Coastal Residential 3.5. This will be the proposed changes, big block, and the results of those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. With that, staff finds it meets all the standards and requirements of the land development regulations and comp plan. The applicant is present, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, the?
Just curious, why, why do we change quasi to legislative?
Platte, this was erroneously coded as a quasi-judicial item. This is vacations are legislative in your discretion.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Waxler?
Jerry Waxler, McCrory Law Firm, here on behalf of the applicant. As Sean noted, this property was platted in the late 1800s. In 1972, the entire platte was vacated except for these eight lots. I wasn't here in 1972, so I can't tell you why that was done. All the property, including those eight lots, is now owned by the applicant. Vacating the remaining eight lots is intended to just create one unified development tract. We would request approval. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant before she goes too far? Okay. Seeing none, we will open it up for public input, and anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, Commissioners. John Everson, Melvyn Street. I have a question about this that, I don't know how many Commissioners have been out there and taken a look at the lot and so on, but I happened to talk with Phil Iludo, who I believe is with the Storm Sewer Management, with the Public Utilities, and I wanted to find out about, how about, you're talking about eliminating the plattes, what about present right-ofways over the property and so on? Now, one thing I asked him about was, I know that between Harborview and the subject property, that there is a drainage ditch that runs from Harborview all the way down to Harper. And that drainage then goes through two underground huge pipes. And if any of you are going out there to take a look at it, I defy you to find out where they are by just driving up the street. They're covered with brush and everything else. Those pipes are primarily used because the two lakes between Harper and the Harborview are tidal lakes. That means that water is coming up from down below and through those pipes and filling those lakes and then draining out. This is one of the problems that we have with the tremendous flooding that we often get on Shady Lane. And I think it's important that you go out and take a look at it. Also, the property is classified as a flood zone, and it's an AE flood zone, which to me is very difficult to build on. And if there's any disturbance on that, we're going to increase the flooding to where we've been trying to get you people to understand how to get rid of it on Shady. I've talked with a number of people on Shady. They say they've talked about this with you people for many years, and nothing has been done. And they have learned to live with the fact, the tide comes in, we flood; the tide goes out, we lose the flood. So I think these are things that you should consider, and I would like you to really take a look, because to me, that, right now, with those two pipes, it's a hazard to children walking in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one else rising. Move to close public input portion.
Motion to second to close, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move approval of UB4.
Second. With that, is there discussion or questions?
Did we, did we close the public?
Yes.
We just did.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I had a question.
Go ahead.
So I'm looking at the attached map from the 1800s, which was interesting that you actually found that. It looks like it was hand-drawn on there. So the original, I guess what the applicant's trying to accomplish here is just to unify ownership of the entire parcel and clean it up. So at a later date, he can come back to the board with whatever the proposal is and have that unified ownership.
Correct. There are some applications in-house, which includes some properties over here to the west. This is Charlotte Harbor Mixed Use in order to do a planned development on the entire site. But again, this is just, the purpose of this is to erase these lines here. This is, the only thing this is doing is erasing lines on paper. You'll be hearing a planned amendment from Charlotte Harbor Mixed Use and an associated PD rezone for all of these properties sometime later, I believe this year.
Yeah, I mean, we've done similar things, which treat vacations and things like that. When somebody owns the entire parcel, you get that unified parcel by cleaning. I look at this as just a cleanup.
Yes, sir, as did.
All owned by the same person, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I look at it as the opportunity to make a better development in there as opposed to what they platted many years ago, which is what we already have all over the county.
And there is a number of environmental features that they have to work around, so they are well aware of that.
Yeah, to your point, Mr. Chair, if you look on that 1886 map, it's got, I don't know, it looks like hundreds of lots blocked off into sections, I think 12 sections, something like that.
I think that's what it was numbered, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion to second for approval. Any further questions? Hearing none, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition to the motion, that passes unanimously. And with that, we will go to our next item.
Thank you, Commissioners. Sean Cullen, playing zoning official. This is legislative. This is a platte vacation request from the Eugene M. Grant Estate. This is a request to vacate an undeveloped tract or parcel of land, paper streets located down in South County, adjacent to Carmelita Street and South County Regional Park. The entire property contains about 54.56 acres, and the platted streets contain about 1.36 acres. This was platted in 1908, so this is also a, an older one, Platte Book 1, page 14. So again, Platte Book 1, it's really old. Here is the full-range aerial, the mid-range, and the aerial location map. As you can see, there are streets going through here. One thing that I need to point out, Dundee Road up here at the top is actually not a platted right-ofway. That has come to our attention during the review of this, and so even though the physical asphalt runs through there, we've already worked this with the developer, and they will speak about it as well. We will do the same thing we did with Sand Hill Boulevard, because we have been maintaining it for the millennia, if you will. We are going to get that dedicated, similar to how we did with the curve on Sand Hill, and put that into rightful property, county property ownership. This is just again erasing platted streets, but that were never built on and not currently being used. The zoning designations are a mix of RMF, residential multifamily 12 and 10, with a future land use map designation of high-density residential. This is the 1,000-foot buffer notification map, and this would be the results of the proposed changes, and those proposed changes overlaid onto the aerial. With that, staff would be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant and their representatives are here as well.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sale?
So Dundee Road is not a county-owned right-ofway.
No.
But we're going to accept it now.
We have been paving it, we've been maintaining it for many, many, many decades.
But we typically don't accept a road unless it meets our standards.
That is correct, but in this situation, because this is access for a number of properties out here already, and we have been maintaining it as if it was already accepted, it's within an MSBU, where we have the same situation with the property next to it that's going to be doing a similar petition that's in-house, that's under review. So we need to make sure that we keep this in so that the property owners here have good access, and we can continue to have that as a, as a public roadway.
Well, I'm just trying to be consistent, because if you look at Kingsway Circle, I think that was the same situation. We did not accept that from the developer, yet it does access to people who pay, you know, houses in Charlotte County, you know. So I'm looking at this, you know, it seems like we're waiving that requirement of, you know, it has to be brought up to our standards before we accept it, if that's policy.
If I may, on Kingsway Circle, I don't believe we ever maintained it.
I think we patched it. I think we did do some things out there.
You have to continuously maintain it, and you have to sign an affidavit to that effect and prove it.
Okay. Well, maybe that might have been a semi-bad example, but let, let me just say this. Generally speaking, it's our policy not to accept roads unless they meet our standards.
Understood.
And we're not doing that here. Is that correct?
That I will defer to engineering. Again, this just came to light very recently, so we're still investigating that. As of right now, though, based on the surveys provided and the documentation we can find, the existing asphalt of Dundee Road is on private property.
Right. So it may require new drainage design piping. We don't know what the base looks like, the foundation. We're just, we've just been paving it. We don't know really what's under there, because we don't have any specifications. It was done who knows when, and we just, I don't know how we ended up taking it over, but at some point, the county went in there and did things.
Correct. And we put it into an MSBU in order for funds to be able to be collected in order to do this.
So let's, this development gets going, there'll be an access point down Dundee Road at some point?
They're proposing emergency access only, because Dundee is a substandard road. Road. It's substandard asphalt, if you will.
Well, I can tell you, at some point, they're going to want it, not substandard, they're going to want it to be, to county code, and at some point, that's going to probably have to be completely redone and engineered and designed. Just so we understand what we're getting into.
Understood. And again, this just came to light very recently, within this week, and so that's why we are looking into that currently with the county attorney's office, as well as Public Works. We actually have a meeting with them on this after this meeting to start discussing these. And if the direction is to move forward, I, I will say that I am speculating, but that is, one of the intents is to make sure that stays open, but we will, we'll have further discussions on what the proper course of action.
Yeah, if that's going to be closed, then it's not a problem, but like you said, there's people along Dundee Road who are using that for access. I know the MSBU is paying for it, but at some point, Public Works is going to come in and say, it's time, we have to redo this road, and then the MSBU is going to have to foot the bill.
Or that is just the minimum standard that we maintain that road to is what's currently out there.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Pretty low standard. I've been out on the road. Mr. Burnson, you recognize, sir?
Rob Burnson, Big W Law. I have been sworn in. So this Dundee Road thing just came up to me today, based on the adjacent property that's also seeking to do a vacation of the platte. What we're doing today is a platte vacation. Dundee Road is not a road in the platte, so it has nothing to do with the action that this board's being asked to take today. There are a lot of moving parts of people that will figure out what's going on, but contrary to, I think, what you were saying, this is a public road today because the county cannot expend public funds on a private road. So it already is a public road. But it really isn't for us to decide today how it's, whatever's happening with it, because all we're doing today is really erasing the three lines that were shown in the, in the previous, yeah, those three white lines or the black ones there. That's all this is doing, because this is another one of those real old plattes, paper streets that run between it, and we're just making a unified site for development. All the issues with Dundee Road will come through the development proposals, and, you know, we'll figure out whose road it is and who needs to do what with it at that time.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So right now, the road, the way, is it, is it deeded to the county?
But we, there is no, in our title work on the property at which we, you know, our client is purchasing the property and did title work, there is no easement, there's no dedication, there's nothing for Dundee Road. There is just asphalt that runs across my client's property that's part of an MSBU.
Okay. So Dundee Road, is it within the legal description of your client's property?
A portion of. I don't believe the whole thing is. It's a portion of it.
Okay. Well, that's, never ceases to amaze me, the stuff that pops up.
Well, and, you know, a lot of this you get with these 1800 plattes, you know, there was a platte in the 1800s, and Mrs. Jones ran a driveway to her house, and, you know, over the years, that became the way to get through there, and then it got paved, and, you know, who knows? I'm making all that up for this particular case, but when you're dealing with plattes that were done in the 1800s, they're, you know, you don't know what got, because the other side of the road is all developed.
So Dundee Road is excluded from the request today?
Dundee Road has nothing to do with the request today, the plat does not have a Dundee Road on it, so you're not vacating a part of Dundee Road because there's no, to anyone's knowledge, as we stand here today, there's no legal document creating Dundee Road or its dedication or its...
Yeah, well, we can't vacate what we don't own.
Correct.
Okay, that's interesting.
If I may, some new information literally just came to light based on people watching this video. It does appear that Dundee Road was actually done via statute as a maintained road dedication back in 2014. So it's not part of this plat, but it is a formally taken over county roadway. We did take that over in 2014.
Would have been, you asked the owners for permission. I'm kidding.
How come?
Sir, that was almost a decade ago at this point.
I wonder why the applicant didn't know that?
It's not on our title work, and I don't, I don't know what this 2014 action is.
And that's why, the reason I brought this up, I wasn't trying to muddy the waters, I wanted full disclosure so that if a, something came back before you and you said, "Wait a second, why are we doing this with Dundee Road? We just did a vacation. Why are we taking it back if we just vac," you know, something like that. But again, that's why I caveated it, that this just came to light within, I just found out about it this morning, staff just started finding out about it yesterday through review of the second plat adjacent to it. So we are still, we'll figure it all out, but as of right now, the lines that they're looking to vacate are proper. Again, I was trying to be transparent with you because I did not want that to come back and bite us in the tuckus.
And I just wanted to add that we've been aware of the existence, the physical existence of Dundee Road, and our, we're designing this project to come back in once we have a unified site, and we have taken into account the existence of Dundee Road. We're not trying to build stuff over that road or anything like that, we've set back from the road. So we are doing it as it's, as if it's a existing platted road, although it's not, to our knowledge.
And if the 2014 action by the board took place, you would assume that would have been recorded and picked up in title?
Yes, our real estate services staff, they have the plat book, so we'll get with the applicant to show what that is.
But it wouldn't have been part of his title search. It wouldn't fall into his because it's not part of that plat.
And that, where the road is and where the asphalt is, you know, I don't know the legal descriptions of all that. Literally, when I got here at 1:30 today, this was all news to me, so.
All right, very good.
Breaking news.
Breaking news. Standby, it'll change. Okay, with that then, if there are no further questions, we'll open up public input portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Alan Holsizer. I live in the Waterford Estates property. I actually live in the lower left-hand corner of that map, right where the gate is that goes on to Carmelita. My house is on that corner, the back of my house is on Carmelita. There's two issues I'm bringing up today, and they're both safety issues. The first is, you know, we're a gated community. Our roads and our gates, our security gates and road system at 25 miles an hour cannot handle any more traffic than what's already there. And the reason I'm bringing that up, because the second issue is, two blocks down the street from me is schools. And Carmelita, Cooper, McKenzie, and Education Road are all right there. And if you were ever there at 8:00 in the morning, or 4:00 in the afternoon, there are literally hundreds, hundreds of cars on the road, parked. Carmelita happens to be three lanes. Nobody knows what the hell to do when you're in the line to pick up a child and you're trying to get home or go to work or go to Publix. Nobody knows what to do. Should I pull out and go around the traffic? Should I stay in traffic for 20 minutes while the other 100 cars are picking up their children? It's a disaster. There are kids walking along that street, a lot of kids live in my development. It's an issue that needs to be looked at. If the road project, if the road system there isn't going to be able to handle what's there now, because it can't, because they actually have a policeman there every day to let the buses out. It is literally a disaster on all four of those roads. And if something isn't done, we're going to create a hell of a lot more traffic coming out of this development onto Carmelita. And back to my first issue, if they don't want to go through the school zone, guess where they're going to go? Through Waterford Estates to get out on Airport Road. Because I know, because when I go to work in the morning, I don't even go out my back door. I go out towards Airport to stay away from the school zones. All four of those streets have cars lined up, 100 every single day, and this is going to make it worse. It needs to be addressed. I'm not for or against this project, I'm for or against doing it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one else rising. Move to close public input portion.
Motion to second to close, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Mr. Burnson on rebuttal.
Yeah, just a reminder, this is just a plat vacation. It's just getting rid of the roads, it's not approving any development. Any development's going to have to go through all of the county procedures, all the studies, all of those traffic issues will be addressed through the development of the property, so this is just...
And you've already heard the concerns, so you know what to look for.
We have, and we will take them back to our client.
All right, very good, thank you, sir. Anything further?
If I may, just to be perfectly clear, this is by right uses with the RMF 12 and 10, so this is the only public hearing required for this.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Move approval.
I know, you never talk when somebody's moving approval, but just for the board's information.
Oh, man, did you step in it?
I know, I know. I hope I don't live to regret it, but I'm here to help you. The information has just gotten forward that this was done through a right-of-way reservation in right-of-way book 611. Title search would not search a right-of-way book, so that's why there would be no information in the title search, but it was done under the Florida statute 95361 in May of 2014. And that's your wonderful real estate department that got that information.
Thank you. And I'll go back, I've recognized... Move approval, UB5, sir.
All right, thank you. Second, Commissioner DeSalle?
Yeah, to the citizens' input, I sympathize with you. I know exactly what you're talking about. It's not just here, it's every school in the county for parent pickup. The lines go for blocks on Orlando Boulevard to Port Charlotte Middle. To your point, there probably is hundreds of cars and people who want to get home, I watch them, they figure, you know, you have stacked cars, and they just dodge, like, "I'm going to take a chance and shoot out and go in the opposite lane to try to, to like, get to where they want to go." It's a complete train wreck, and it's at certain times of the day, that's the thing. People either understand, "I'm just not going to go down that road," but some people can't help it. It really is a mess, and I don't know, even if this is done perfectly, and this isn't to approve a project, this is just, you know, something else, but even if the client wants to take care of it, he's not going to be able to fix that problem. It's a matter of stacking for school, and when you design these schools, understanding that there's just a ton of parent pickup, that's just the way it is. School buses only go to a maximum of two miles out, then you're a walker. Most parents are not going to have their kids walk in excess of two miles in the heat and rain and in these conditions to school. That's all the parent pickup stuff. I've been through it, I'm doing it now.
And that really, not our, not our lane.
Right.
Not our lane, be very clear, but that is something that, if they could look at that at the school board, it's money. It comes down to money.
Yes.
And I think that's too far, but, you know, I walked uphill both ways and, no, just kidding.
Different day and age, sir. But I've looked at that, and, you know, we were 1.9 miles, like, we were like a tenth of a mile from the school, so we couldn't get busing, you had to walk.
Right.
So that's the reality of it, and people, parents get there 30 minutes, sometimes 40 minutes, in advance and start stacking. You know, they want to be the first in line, and you just sit there with your engine running for 30, 40 minutes. It's just what parents do, and it's at every school across the county, and I was in Cape Coral and I got stuck in, it's everywhere. It's not Charlotte County. Parent pickup is a problem, and they stack up on the closest road. And this happens to be the road that they stack up on. And the only way to eliminate that is to have a stacking parent pickup when you design a school, on school ground, some type of access road that snakes around, I don't know how else to do it, otherwise they're on public roads.
And that doesn't always work. I live across the street from a school that has that, and they're still backed out onto a four-lane roadway.
Yeah, it's one of those things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously, and now we'll go to a joint presentation, yes or no?
Sure, we can do that.
Joint presentation, both legislative, on the Neptide Canal vacation portion of San Carlos Basin. I figure we could put the presentations together, if we need to do two separate inputs, that's fine.
Yes, sir. So these are two plat vacations, they are, they are street vacations, partial plat vacations. Every street vacation is technically a partial plat vacation. One is for Mr. Tyler Canfield, and the other is Mr. Burnson on behalf of a confidential applicant. They're requesting to vote, vacate portions of the San Carlos Basin adjacent to the rear of their properties located on Neptide Drive. You just heard a vacation a couple of months ago, basically between these two. Mr. Canfield owns the property with the house on it. Here's the high aerial in Harbor Heights, mid-range aerial, and the location map. So as you can see, this house existing here, these are the previous vacations that you approved a few months ago. Let's get into the location map, the 1,000-foot buffer notification map. Just for reference, the other property is immediately to the north of these, the ones that were previously vacated. The property owners are looking to swap some of the lands. The future land use map designation being in a, currently in a canal, there is none, that will turn into low-density residential, but it will not have any vested density. The zoning designation is RSF 3.5, and these will be the proposed changes for Mr. Canfield. And going to the next one, the proposed changes for the second applicant. So with that, staff finds it's not depriving any current property owners or the general public of any access to water, it meets all the standards of the Land Development Regulations and Comprehensive Plan, and the applicants and their representatives are here to answer any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any as well.
Okay, we'll open up the public unless there's questions for the board, public input portion of the meeting for the UB6, which is Mr. Canfield's. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward. I think we have to do two public hearings, don't we? Yeah, so this is the first one, UB6. Are there, anyone wishing to speak to UB6?
Mr. Chairman, I see no one rising. Move to close public hearing.
Motion to second to close, any opposition? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of UB6.
And I'll second it. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes 5-0. Next, I will go to UB7 for public input. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record, you'll have up to five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I see no one rising. Move to close public hearing.
Motion to second to close, any opposition? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of UB7.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, that passes unanimously, and we will go to...
Can I ask, Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Are we going to see a number of these happening? You know, we did one, and now we're doing more, and do you think these are going to start stacking up where...
You could. This is a severely under-dredged canal, some of them only...
Think?
Yeah, this was actually a basin, platted as a basin, and it was significantly under-dredged. If you look at the aerials, you can kind of see when Harbor Heights got platted, they started doing some dredging. I believe they just didn't get there fast enough before the various state and federal agencies came in and started shutting down all these dredging operations and plating and all the environmental-based issues that we deal with on a regular basis, which is why these are dirt roads. I don't even believe they're county-maintained roads, they're just dirt, marble, gravel, and the canals were either not fully dredged out, they didn't even make it up to where they were supposed to. There's a number of ones... Let me see if I can find a good aerial. Going the wrong way, sorry about that. So further down, you can see how some of these canals are going up, all of these were intended to have canals going up, and they just stopped digging them. Again, given the timeframe when these areas started developing, similar to the last quadrant of Rotunda and some of the, some of those areas in West County where the environmental agencies started cracking down and just stopped all the, all this dredging of swampland and canals. So you might...
Very good, sir. All right, we'll move on to UB8, that's CSZ 2206, The Cove of Rotunda Golf Center LLC, and this is quasi-judicial. Commissioner Doherty?
Thank you, sir. I had my monthly staff briefing with Community Development, the Attorney's Office, and filed my paperwork this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSalle?
Nothing. Nothing to file?
Thank you. Commissioner Deutsch?
I've really filed paperwork.
And I have nothing to disclose, and we'll find out from Commissioner Truex when he comes back. Jay Xiao, you have the microphone.
Okay, good afternoon. For the record, Jay Xiao, Community Development Department, and my planning expert qualification is attached to a staff memo as Exhibit 1. So The Cove of Rotunda Golf Center LLC is requesting application CSZ 2206. There are two specific requests, which are to waive the condition for concurrent identification of a receiving zone as set forth in Resolution 2020-038, and certify ascending zone covering approximately 88.11 acres located at...
Ms. Xiao, I'm sorry, point of order, I'm going to give it back to the chairman, and do you have any disclosures?
Nothing to disclose.
All right, you have the gavel, sir.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Okay, the property located at 12455 South Access Road in the Port Charlotte area and within the West County area, and located in Commission District 4 to serve 375 density And, and see, this is general location of a subject property, which is located in the south side of State Road 776, and the site is part of Economic Center on the 2050 Framework Map, and it is designated as medium-density residential with RMF 10 zoning, and the site is located outside of Coastal Heights area. So now I would like to, I would like to briefly discuss the history of the subject property specifically related to the transport density units. The subject property qualifies as a sending zone pursuant to Resolution Number 2020-038, approved and adopted by the board on April 14, 2020. The resolution approved a limited relief from Section 3-9-150D1K of the county's transport density units code. The adopted resolution allows for the certification of density units from the subject property, and the adopted resolution also requires that, there are two requirements. First is no certification of subject property as a sending zone shall occur unless and until applications for plan amendment, rezoning, and transfer density units as applicable have been submitted for no appropriate receiving zone and certification of sending zone application has been submitted for subject property. And second requirement is density units transferred from subject property must be transferred to a receiving zone served by potable water and sanitary sewer service. So on April 26, 2022, the board approved a CSZ application to certified 106 units of density from the subject property and the TDU application to transfer the requested 106 units density onto a property located on Winchester Boulevard, actually the west side of Winchester Boulevard, just south of the North County line. And the applicant, the property owner, is now requesting the board to waive the condition of concurrent identification of a receiving zone as set forth in the Resolution 2020-038. The stated reasons are that the creation of sending zone density units detaches density from a subject property and places it into certificate form. The certification of density does not grant the right for the density to be transferred to another property. The board reviews our application to certify density against the TDU requirements for sending zone, and also review our application to transfer certified density units onto a new property. So it is staff's professional opinion that the applicant's request is not contrary to any goals, objective, and policy set forth in the county's comprehensive plan, nor the intent or requirements established in Section 3-9150 TDU code. So it is purely the board's decision to either approve or deny this waiver request. So if the board approves the applicant's waiver request, it is also staff's professional opinion that the applicant's second request to certify 375 units of transfer density is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, the criteria as set forth in the county's TDU code, and the county's Code of Laws and Ordinance and other applicable guidelines. TDU code and the county's Code of Laws and Ordinance and other applicable guidelines. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, Ms. Waxler, floor is yours.
Jerry Waxler, McCrory Law Firm, representing The Cove of Rotunda LLC, which is requesting certification of 375 units of transfer density without the identification of a receiving zone. Essentially, we want to take the density and put it into a certificate. 400 density units will remain on the property. While certifying a sending zone and certifying a receiving zone must both be approved in a quasi-judicial hearing, one of the hallmarks of quasi-judicial hearings is that the Board evaluates the request against the criteria set forth, in this case, in the TDU ordinance. Approving sending zones and approving receiving zones are two separate processes in the TDU ordinance, subject to two different sets of criteria and two different applications. The criteria for approving a sending zone does not include anything about the future receiving zone for that density, not its character, location, or nature. Similarly, the criteria for receiving zone does not include any criteria about the sending zone from which the density will be transferred. Almost all of the TDU transfers that this Board approves results from rezoning that increases density on a parcel. Inherent in that approval is a determination that the site may receive transferred density. It's usually actually a specific condition of a PD that they must transfer density to the site in order to develop the number of units that the PD consent plan approves. We actually had a couple of those here today. The requirement that The Cove come back repeatedly so that the Board can, over and over again, determine whether it meets the criteria for ascending zone while concurrently reviewing a proposed receiving zone to see if it meets that criteria, is a redundant process that adds time and also adds to the cost of development. Applying to certificate sending zone density requires a one-time payment of a $655 application fee. By contrast, if it's here, ascending zone is prohibited from certificating its density and instead, each time it has a buyer for the density, must apply to approve the transfer of density from ascending zone while concurrently also applying to approve a receiving zone requires payment of a $700 application fee every time that they come in. Literally, a high price to pay, especially when you consider that each subsequent application the Board has already previously found that the property qualifies as a sending zone. When the TDU ordinance was first drafted, there was no ability to certificate density. It was quickly realized that there was no need to evaluate the same sending zone over and over again. The solution was to add the ability to place all density from an approved sending zone into a certificate, whereupon that density, having been found to meet the criteria for transfer from a sending zone, could easily be placed on an approved receiving zone. The Board gains nothing from the requirement to identify a receiving zone concurrent with the request for ascending zone. On April 26th, this Board approved on its consent agenda the transfer of density from this property, finding that it met the requirements for ascending zone while concurrently approving a receiving zone, the Winchester Apartments. Because of the condition that a request to approve the property as ascending zone must always be accompanied by a request to certify the receiving zone for that density, you will hold that same hearing again and again until all the density is transferred from that site. That is why The Cove of Rotunda is requesting that today you again find that it meets the requirements for ascending zone, waive the requirement not found in your TDU code that it must identify a receiving zone in order to qualify as ascending zone and permit it to place its density into certificate form. We join with staff's analysis and its professional opinion that the request to waive the condition is not contrary to any goals, policies, or objectives in your comp plan, nor the intent or requirements established in your TDU code. We likewise join with staff's analysis and its professional opinion that the request to approve the property as ascending zone and certificate, 375 density units is also consistent with the comp plan and with the requirements of the TDU code. We also offer the approval from April 26th as further evidence that the property meets all the criteria for ascending zone. The Cove of Rotunda LLC respectfully requests that you waive the requirement for concurrent approval of receiving zone and approve certification of 375 density units from its property. Available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waxler. Are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none. I'll open up the public input portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record and you'll have up to five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I see no one rising. Move to close public input.
Motion second to close, is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of UB8.
Second. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a question to staff. The Resolution 2020-038, does it have a provision for a waiver of a condition? Is that why they're here today or is this something that wasn't contemplated in the original resolution?
The 2020...
Your microphone, please.
Sorry. The Resolution Number 2020-038, that was a resolution to approve the limited relief because this site was developed golf course. We have the criteria for sending zone said if you have the building permit for the golf course subsequent to December 7th, 2007, December 3rd, 2007, so you are qualified as a sending zone. However, this site was built as a golf course at least 1981, so it's a very old golf course. So at that time, they came to the county, asked for limited relief to qualify as a sending zone. So that's his resolution was done, approve the limited relief, but have two requirement. One is when you certify the density from this site, you must concurrently identify a receiving zone and other requirement, you must have water and sewer for the site for the receiving zone.
Right, so I understand the concurrent identification of a receiving zone, but did the resolution offer a waiver where they could just go to the county and get or they have to come before the Board?
I don't believe that resolution is offered a waiver for that's two condition, that's why they're here today.
Right, so, all right. I guess what I'm saying is now that you understand situations like this, should the resolution be amended at some point?
Tough to us.
It's the Board decision.
Yeah, I'm, you know...
I think what this does is it gives us the opportunity...
To look at it.
To allow it to happen, to go in, as they become ascending zone and they certify these TDUs and then when they come back, they have to have approval to put them someplace else. So it basically, it allows them to apply less dense development someplace that they can then take those units and they can use them anywhere in West County or they could actually move them somewhere else in the county, out of West County, but they can't move anything into West County, which makes those TDUs relatively valuable in West County.
Yeah, I just didn't know if this is, could be more of a function at the staff level. I like to see a lot, but I don't know if this is something that staff could do at the staff level as opposed to having an applicant come in and spend resources, time, and money.
Sean Cullen playing his own...
Well, maybe this is a one-off, I don't know.
This situation, yes, I believe it's a one-off. A, the limited relief where you folks put that condition on it, I believe, and Jerry can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is probably the last of the density that's being severed off of here, most likely, so this one might be set. Again, this was a condition you folks imposed on it, we understand it, that was your choice. In the future, if you'd like, you are kind of correct in the TDU situation, the sending zones and receiving zones are very ministerial. If you instruct staff, we'd be, I won't say more than happy to, but we would be happy to make that more of an ministerial process because it truly is very fact-based, you know, the standards you put on all the others. So take like the burnt store ones that you heard this morning, you had already approved the plan development, you'd already approved the burnt store area plan, this was just the formal mechanism to put this on. If you folks would like us to retool our TDUs to not have the certification of sending zones and/or receiving zones taken out of the requirements for public hearing and just make it staff-level ministerial, staff would be happy to do that, that's up to you folks.
And I think to his point, once we approve something or we say, yes, they can have that density there, then...
Right.
I mean, it's an extra step that actually costs the applicant money.
Your...
Money and time. But it does increase cost for people that are doing these developments and I think it's something we should probably, hate to say it, workshop it to make sure we have a good understanding of the item and if it makes sense, then we could pull that out for an ministerial application. Thank you. One thing I do need to kind of make certain it's clear is that this was not done in 1981 because I didn't live here in 1981 and I built the clubhouse on that golf course, as well as worked on that golf course in development with Commissioner Doherty, who was the engineer of record for a lot of...
It was actually the project where I met you.
That's correct.
While you were working with my staff in our conference room, I came in and interrupted your meeting, I had to catch a plane for Arizona or California or something. Pulled my guys out so I could confer them and then you guys went back to your meeting.
Right.
Apologize for being rude that day.
That's a sunshine violation.
By the way, no, it was before we were elected. So that was in 99 and we, I think the clubhouse was a 2000 or 2001 permit, but anyway, just to, just to kind of clarify.
Like a moonshine violation.
I didn't drink moonshine back then.
But they were making it.
He qualified it back then.
Sure they were making it.
I'm not saying I'm drinking it now, I just wasn't drinking it back then.
Third. I think it's still built prior to December 3rd, 2007.
Yeah, it still fits the criteria, which I'm very, very aware of, but yes. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, further discussion? Hearing none, is there opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now we will go to a legislative item, TCP-22-01, revisions to the flu policy.
Good afternoon again, Jay Shaw, Community Development Department. Staff initiated application TCP 2201 and today's hearing is adoption hearing. And this is a text amendment to the county's comprehensive plan to revise FLU future land use, FLU policy 2.1.15 TDU waivers to address future residential development on county-owned properties historically used for public services and facilities. And this policy applies to the entire Charlotte County. And on the screen, it shows actually changes and actually on May 24th, 20, May 24th, the Board approved this large-scale plan amendment application for transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other state review agencies for review and comment. And on June 24th, the DEO issued a no comment letter and all other review agencies all issued no comment. Basically, if you approve these TDU waivers, that means county-owned properties and used for public services and facilities and the zoning was public land and facility or parks and recreation that was land use changed to that two designations prior 2010. So if the uses ceased, county don't want that and find other location for these uses and we can do a land use change back to the previous residential land use category and without transferring density. So that will save the public expense the best interest of Charlotte County citizens. So it is staff's professional opinion, this application is generally consistent with the county's comprehensive plan and the Code of Ordinance and the other applicable guidelines. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Commissioner Doherty? Oh, you're in a queue and I didn't take you out. Got you. Okay. Any questions? Okay, we'll open up the public input portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward, state your name for the record and you'll have up to five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I see no one rising and move to close the public input portion.
Motion second to close, opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Move an ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Charlotte County, Florida, pursuant to Section 163.31843, Florida statutes amending the future land use FLU element of the county's comprehensive plan by revising FLU policy 1.2.15 TDU waivers, petition TCP-22-01 applicant, Board of County Commissioners of Charlotte County, Florida, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and providing for transmittal of adopted ordinance.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a question on the density. So if there was density on site prior to construction and then the density was severed off and sold, how does this take into account that? Because it says, it doesn't account for that. It just says if there was density there prior to construction, you automatically get the density.
As I recall, all the county's property is, was rezoned, land is changed to public land and facility, I don't recall there is certified density. County never did that. County only did one, two certified density, one is on the island, another one is we did a couple of years ago for the parks located on the east side of Cedar Road. That's all we have for the TDU certification. So I don't think there is anything related to density certified for these cases. I don't recall any land have that situation for public land and facility, we certified the density out.
We are moving forward and taking steps now whenever we do a plan amendment or a rezone to certify density, but if it is something that could be surplus in the future such as this, we would make sure to take that into account. Certain things that we're certifying density off, you'll see in the near future, things for like the Habitat Conservation Plan where we know that's going to go into preservation, it will never be built on, things like that, we're severing that density off. But any, any properties we vet with, you know, all the various departments and real estate services to make sure that there's not a future need or a future potential for surplus, so that should not affect that at all.
Commissioner, you...
You go ahead, yeah.
So like in the Spring Lake area where we put a vacuum station in there and just say for some reason that gets vacated, we, we don't need that station anymore. I know it's not going to happen, but I'm just... It's in a residential neighborhood, we know it's got a residential density unit on it or maybe two, because I think it's on two lots, then that would be reinstated at that point in time or no?
Well, actually, those are special exceptions, so those don't actually do plan amendments or rezones.
Okay.
So the...
Bad example.
The zoning and future land use stays the same.
All right.
And also, since 2010, comprehensive plan rewrites the current comprehensive plan, we add government users and facility in each land use category, so you will not see any land use change to public land and facility anymore.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion further? In hearing none, is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business of the day. I will provide, if anybody has any last-minute comments, I'll let you do that. If not, we stand adjourned, have a great break.